Good evening, everyone. How you doing tonight?
Good.
Good. So, we're gonna call the meeting to the Santee City Council to order at June 12th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. And so, tonight, the invocation will be given by Philip, or Phil Eisenhower. And we're honored to welcome Phil Eisenhower from the Rock Church of Alcohene tonight. Phil has been with the church for eight years and serves an associate campus pastor today. He earned his Bachelor of Science and Master of Arts in Theological Studies at Bethel Seminary at California State University San Marcos. The church located at 808 Jackman Street, Alcohene continues a rich tradition in the region through its connection to Rock Church. And since its establishment in 2000, the Rock Church, under Pastor Miles McPherson's visionary leadership, has flourished, guided by the principle of "do something" church. It has experienced remarkable growth. Today, they are proud to have five campuses, five campuses present in Oahu, Hawaii, and online streaming and church-anywhere sites, all contributing to their mission of fostering discipleship and community globally. Phil's connection to the local community is profound. He was raised in Santee and is distinguished alumnus of Santana High School. How's that for a description?
Yes.
His personal life is a testament of his faith, as he and his wife Amanda, did I get that right? Thank you, have shared a blissful marriage of 15 years and are blessed with three sons. Phil served as a youth pastor for five years before assuming his current role as an associate pastor. He is passionate about preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ and offering guidance, support, and encouragement to those seeking faith-based connections. Phil is dedicated to helping others come to know God, grow in the community, and make a difference. So, before we go on, though, we're gonna let the record reflect that all council members are present. So, tonight, we want to thank you for being here, Phil. And we ask that when you do your invocation, you pray for the United States of America because they need all the help they can get, state of California, Santee, and of course, this council. And then, tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by, let's see, how about Mrs. White? I love it when they look like a deer in the headlights. So, everyone, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening. God, we thank you for your goodness and your grace. We thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America, Lord. We pray for our leadership, Lord, and we thank you for them. God, grant them wisdom and discernment and make decisions for the country, God. And we thank you for those who've gone before us, Lord, their service and sacrifice, Lord, that we might have the freedoms that we have at this time. And we thank you for the great state of California and as well as the leadership, God, that you've set in place. And God, would this continue to be a state that just moves forward and continues to grow? We're excited for all things to come. And we just thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here tonight, have conversations that pray will continue to strengthen and grow the city of Santee. May this city, city of Santee, be a place of gracious hospitality, of unity and love, with great expectations of things to come. God, we say before us, and we know, Lord, that since you're at our right hand, Lord, we'll not be shaken. And so, Lord, we simply trust you with all our heart. We lean not on our understanding. In all the ways, Lord, we acknowledge you, Lord, would you make our paths straight. Bless our time. We thank for the leadership of this council. We thank for the leadership of this city. Bless their families. Be with them and grant us the gracious wisdom as we move forward. May you steward well what you've entrusted to us. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Join me in a pledge to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance, please declare it of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, just as a reminder to folks that wish to speak, whether it's on non-agenda public comment, or for other issues on the calendar, we have to have your speaker slip. And speaker slips are on the back table. And those have to be submitted prior to the calling of the item or public, not a public agenda comment. That way, it makes sure everybody gets a chance to speak. So, let's go to the consent calendar. Are any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the calendar? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pull number 11 for discussion.
Okay. Number 11. Ron?
No, no, thank you.
None for me.
And?
Not after 11's pulled.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the council?
So moved?
Second. Motion and second?
One second, sir.
I was gonna say, that was a pretty quick one.
Didn't even have to push the button. Wow.
Are we ready?
No, I'm trying to, hold on, I'm gonna pull number 11.
No worries.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us item number 11, adoption of a resolution adopting the general fund reserve policy. And Heather, do we have, did you want a presentation on that?
Yeah, I do, actually. And the reason why I pulled it to discuss is I remember in our last conversation about this, when it was brought back to us, that we would, we said we would defer this and we would bring it back around budget time, which is now, obviously. And so, I think we need to have a discussion about it and not be on consent.
Okay, sounds good. Heather?
So, when I brought this back to city council in March, March 27th, there was a draft version. And in the draft version, we had no changes. So, that's why it came back on consent. I can go back through the items that, or the, I guess, the setup of the reserve policy?
I would like that because they refresh our memory, because like I said, always back, all the way back to March, which was the last discussion.
Of course.
Not only that, I think we may have had disagreement on the amount of that reserve.
Oh, absolutely. But I think this goes back to the discussion, though.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So, basically, it is a 20% reserve, which is typical, which is what we have right now. This is just basically the formal version in a council policy instead of being part of the resolution that we have typically done in the past. The other additional reserve was the supplemental reserve, which would kick in at 22%. And it would be 1%. If we do have, if we do go over 22%, it would be that, excuse me, that, that difference between 22 and 23 would go into a separate reserve to be used for items that come up during the year that we don't really have included in our, in our operating budget, things that aren't typically thought of, like surprises, you know, we need extra money for a consulting contract or something like that. And then, yeah, so that, that's basically, those are the two reserves. We also talk about in the reserve policy how we would repay the reserve, the operating reserve, the main reserve, if we ended up using it and we came up with a, you know, one- to three-year funding plan. And then, the calculation of the reserve, we talk about the calculation of the reserve, which is a calculation based on operating expenditures minus any one-time items that are in our budget. Let's see. So, that was basically, basically the gist of it. Also listed is if council wants to use the reserve, it would be a council vote.
So, back to the 1%, Heather, is that, so, understanding that when it goes above 22%, and then you can add up to 5% into the supplemental reserve, so up to 20, between 22 and 27%?
No, so, the supplemental reserve would only be funded. So, if we had, let's say we closed the year out and we had 25% reserve. So, the, the amount between 20 and 22 would be available for appropriation or whatever. The amount between 22 and 23 would go into the supplemental reserve. And then, the amount from between 23 and 25 would also be available for appropriation. So, what would happen is, over the years, if that supplemental reserve accumulated funds, it would only accumulate up to 5%.
In the reserve reserve?
Basically.
I mean, it's a reserve of a reserve?
Yeah, yes.
And I just, that's where I, yeah, I don't, I don't, I just don't see a need for a reserve of a reserve. That's, we have reserve funds, and then we're gonna have a reserve of reserve funds that could accumulate up to 5% of our budget?
It could, yes.
I mean, that's why we do a budget. That's why we have reserves. That's, that's what, that's what that's for. I, I understand the oh crap fund, is basically what this is. But...
So, in our scenario today, our, our budget that was presented to us is about $60 million. So, if this got up to 5%, it would be an additional $3 million. That would be in a reserve reserve, I guess, right? A surplus reserve? I don't know.
Yeah, so, so until it would reach the 5%, we would continue to add to it as long as we were over that 22%, up to the 23%, up to that, that 1%. And the reserve amount would change every year because the budget increases basically every year.
Yeah, percentage of the amount.
Yeah, so it could go up to four or $5 million over, over time as we continue to grow our
Yeah, correct.
Budget. Yeah, I just, I, I'm, I'm fine with the other part, the 22%. That was the number I think we did all kind of talk about. And it was gonna be 25, it was gonna be 20, it was, we got down to 22. I'm good with that, but...
No, it's, it's 20, it's 20.
Well, it's up to 22, isn't it?
No, it's, the reserve 1% doesn't kick in until we get to 22.
Okay, gotcha. So, yeah. Why aren't we just increasing it to 22 and then?
I mean, I can answer that since this originated with me as far as having a oh crap policy, if you want to call it that. So, this is the, last March wasn't the first time that it was brought to us. That was the first, we all had a discussion about the reserve policy and what we'd like to see. We all talked about different ideas. And then, based on that, Heather brought this back in March and, you know, formalized the policy. And there's a couple of reasons. For me, for my now-fifth year, I guess, on city council, I've seen the oh crap funds needed in a significant way. I can think of the lighting at the girls' ballfields and that. And that was, you know, $1.8 million. That was unbudgeted. And then, the sports flex, the asphalt, I mean, the turf replacement, which was not budgeted and not, not in our CIP to replace, you know, immediately. And so, the, the reason behind this...
The town center park, you mean?
Town center, sorry.
Big difference. Sports flex. They pay for their own.
Yeah, no, no, no. Thank you. The reason behind this is that if we're, if we're faced with some kind of big-scale project like that, you know, the, the reserve, the 20% is for large-scale emergency. And, but this is for those unforeseen emergencies that seem to have come up every other year, that are big, big dollar amounts. But I also didn't like the idea of not having, like, if we are in a budget surplus year, and I looked at 20 years of what we had, you know, how the city did, if we are in a budget surplus year, we want to be able to, you know, allocate funds between that 20 and 22% every single year, no matter what, to city council priorities, which always seem to be underfunded, like roads or things like that. And then, only 1% at 23%, that would trigger, okay, let's put some aside for this kind of stuff that seems to pop up, but let's not accumulate a ton of money. We did the math. It was like $500,000, I think, per year.
So, like, are you talking about what 1% is?
Yeah.
So, this year, it's about $600,000?
Okay, so, at the time, you know, without knowing the full, that was the estimate. And, and there's a cap on it. And then, also, everything over 23%, so 24 and on up, if we happen to be that lucky as a city to have that surplus, that also is used for council priorities. I'm just looking for a way, it, it not only helps our credit score to have this kind of policy in place, because we don't have one. It also makes sure that when one department has something that has to be funded immediately, then the whole city, you know, looks at, okay, well, we have this expense, and now we need to reimburse it.
All right. So, I thought we did have an AA credit score already.
Yes, yeah, we do. It's, yeah.
So, we already have an AA credit score. But secondly, the, the concern that I have is that what seems to happen, what I seem to see happen, is anytime that there's any little extra, that money gets, is already being utilized by staff. Like, they're, they're already seeing that. They know that it's there. And they're going after it in another way of, like, we didn't know about the, about the turf. That, that was, like you said, the turf at, at Town Center Community Park. That just kind of came out with, that shouldn't have come, just come out. Well, the reason that just came out, there was a fund for that, but it got taken for something else. So, I don't like having, I, I want to make sure we're seeing everything, we're, we're budgeting it. I just, I don't like having the oh crap moments.
We have.
Well, that's an issue as well. That's, but that's another issue. So, I would, I'm, I'm fine with taking it to 22% and having that be our reserve. And everything still comes back to the city council for a vote on anything, anytime, just like any other time. Anytime we want to use something in reserves, we, we vote about, we, we talk about it, we vote on it. And we've pulled from reserves before. We did it for, for capital improvements. We did it for roads. There's, I don't understand why we have to have a reserve reserve account when it's already the function of the council to hear this stuff and vote on it. If you want, if you want a higher reserve amount, totally great, let's have a higher reserve amount. But I think 22% is a great spot.
I was looking for a formalized mechanism to, we have nev, so we've had these oh crap moments. And, and luckily, we had...
That's why we have a reserve account.
But we never took money out of the reserve to pay for those.
We have.
No, we haven't.
We have.
No, we have not. Not since I've been on council.
Fair enough.
So, so, that's, that's the whole point. We, what happens when you have those oh crap moments is that we all have to, you know, on the fly go, okay, now we've got to fund this. But then, other things that were a priority for every single department, you know, to make it, to make it fit, they have to go, you know, be put by the wayside. So, we have a reserves policy of 20%. We've had two significant expenditures in five years that technically should have be, should have been funded through the reserve, but they were not. So, my idea behind that was to formalize a process to pay for those things. Like, we could say it's 22%, but we've still faced the same issue that we face right now at 20% because we're not re, we're not taking out of the reserve, and we're not reimbursing the reserve when we have those things that are unfunded that we have to take care of, that are big dollar amounts. So, that, that was the thinking behind it.
To me, 20%, all right, so then we don't go over 22%. I mean, that's kind of the same thing where, anyway you look at it, it's, it's the same thing. It's, we're still gonna vote on it. It's still the city council. It's still for us. It's our, it's our determination to decide whether or not we're going to fund a special project or pull from reserves.
Correct.
We had, we've had, we have some, we have some institutional knowledge up here of, of how many years 20% was our 20%. And we're not going below that 20% unless it's, it's pouring cats and dogs outside. It's really, really bad. So, going to 22, I think we would, at that point, okay, we've, we've got some, some wiggle room. And we still maintain our rating of having a 20% reserve.
Well, the, the rating you're referring to is set in a policy. It's not necessarily the, what's in the policy, right? It's just having a, a policy in place is really gonna help us.
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm actually in agreement with Councilwoman Nellis. I think we need to look at moving the reserve up to 22%. If, I'm okay with the 1% above the 22, if we want to keep that in place. I, I understand it both ways. But I think we really need to look at moving it's 22%. And because of the reasons that we're looking at in this budget and what we know is coming. So, all the rising costs of inflation, obviously, was the same as last year, you know, we do have, you know, a budget that we're going through here tonight. But, you know, I do always worry about the next year. We're about the, what's happening next, what's coming. You know, I, I think this is not a secret right here. We all know that next year, we have another MOU with the Firefighter Association coming up next year. We have a sheriff's contract that's coming up in, in two years again. We have new issues that were actually presented to us this week that we didn't know about. That I think, I don't know, I'm playing a little more conservative, I guess, this week, that I really think we need to hedge our bets a little bit more, you know, with the, all these rising costs that, that we're seeing across the board here. And I, I want to propose that we adjust to 22%.
So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understood this when we talked about it, and you just said something about the movement of money. The 1% that increases, actually, that's a set aside, the reserve reserve, so to speak. The idea behind that was that you would originally take any kind of issue that was infrastructure or otherwise and pay for it from the reserve fund. And what you would do is use that other fund to backfill for the, the money that comes out of the original reserve. And the idea behind that is because, like, if we don't backfill that reserve, it could have the potential for going below that 20%.
And I actually, I like the replenishment of reserve policy. I think that is, that is good. That is written well. And there, I just think we need to raise that minimum to 22% at this point.
Well, I think we could do both, actually.
I, I agree. My, where I was coming from was just trying to have a way to, as you say, backfill. And I think, you know, I mean, 22% was one of the numbers I thought about as well. But then, I, you know, and the other part of me is like, but man, if we have over 20%, it's nice for the council every year to have the discretion to go, we want to do something with our council priorities that, you know, we had a good year. And, and so, you know, that does potentially take that away. There's not a lot of looking over the history.
Yeah.
You know?
So, it's really anything over, it's really anything over 20, over 23% is really what we'd be talking about, would be our surplus.
Yes, yes.
We'd be going towards, right?
Right. Because if we had like a $5 million expenditure because there was a bridge failure, something that really could be expensive.
And it's 25% of our reserve.
Corrugated pipe fails.
Corrugated, right. We've seen that happen. So, you take and you pay, you, you have that money immediately in the reserve account.
Yeah.
But how do we, how long would it take us to reimburse that, to get it back up to the 20, 21, 22, whatever we establish? But if we had that additional reserve funding for payments or for reimbursement to the reserve account, well, then we're back at 20% for any other major catastrophe that happens. But we're, now what we're doing is we're looking at that supplemental reserve account to, to, that's where we would start building back up so that in case of future disasters. Does that sound like what we talked about before, or how it's supposed to be implemented? Does that sound familiar to you?
We know that we have this fund. I, I'm sorry. I think it, it, it's a little bit of a shell game, you know? When they, when people know that we have this fund, all right, well, then don't worry about it. We've, we've got that. We'll get council to just go ahead and, and do it on that. Don't worry about it. Don't worry. And that becomes part of the general fund regardless. It just, it just does. That's, that's the history.
But, but the formalizing of the policy, I'm sorry, the formalizing of the policy part is to take that piece that you're talking about away because then it is up to all department heads and the staff as a team to, to figure out, budget-wise, okay, we have to reimburse this year 1% back. And it's not one department, it's, it's all of us together.
Over, up to three years, we discussed.
Right, that one to, one to three years, within one to three years.
Not unrealistic.
I'm, I'm okay with that, with an adjustment of the reserve going to 22%. And then, that other percent goes in that policy that referring to.
I mean, I'm okay with that, too. I just, it, it does limit what we can do.
It does.
Yeah, I mean, for, I'm usually very optimistic about, you know, the future of the economy and everything here. I, this is, this is one of those times where I'm reading the tea leaves. And we've got some, we've got some stuff coming up in the next year here that we may see some changes. I, I think property values are gonna be solid. That's gonna continue to go up. But I see sales already going down. I see, I mean, just physically see, look at our restaurants, look at our stores.
You know what the indicator is for bad economy? An increase in lipstick sales. Not kidding. I'm not kidding. Well, you know, you know.
So, just, I, yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned with that. And that, that's going, that could lead to some leaner times in the near future. So, having any little extra reserve here, because we are, as Vice Mayor Trotter just eloquently stated, we will have a new MOU. We will have a new contract with our deputy sheriff's department. We, these things are gonna come up, and they never get cheaper. I mean, and I'll usually go, hey, tell you what we're gonna do. Let's work for less. It just doesn't typically happen, unfortunately. So, we've...
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I mean, yeah, I just, for me, it was about the mechanism for...
Okay, I'm gonna have the city manager weigh in for a second, should you have any thoughts on this.
Just real quickly, council, whatever you choose to do, staff will modify the operations. But in truth, in the last several years, we have not taken any money out of the reserves because the reserve is supposed to be there for emergencies. So, ever we have all these extra costs, we modify every other thing that we can possibly do on a staff level to make sure that that works. And we still have the 20% set aside there without going into that account, no matter what. If council wants to make 22%, then basically, we're gonna add, in this case, for this year's budget, about $1.2 million to the reserves. But then, that would be set aside as an emergency. It would not be something that you could be using for, well, we just need a new money for sheriff's contract, or we just need something else for operational issues, unless council wanted to establish that as part of the reserve policy. Because right now, we don't go into the reserves if we have increased expenses in any department, including the sheriff's contract or others, unless we bring that back to council for a special dispensation. So, however you wish to do that, we just need to make sure the reserve policy effectively states that. Because on a staff perspective, we don't go into the reserves no matter what.
Okay.
We find every other option to not do that.
Fair enough. But Sean, what I'm hearing is, they're saying that we, we can't do that as a council. If we vote on it...
Oh, you, you can do that. I think, yes. I mean, I think, I hear your point, councilmember, because you're saying, well, you want it to come back. So, if there's a decision about that, staff does everything it can. And when it says we can't, or you present the option...
There's nothing left you can do. We can't do any more than come back to us, and then we go, and then we make that decision.
Make the decision.
This is clear, this is entirely a policy question. You can, you can do what you're suggesting. You can do what's been presented.
Thank you.
In that case, do I have a motion to, on this?
I have a motion to adopt staff recommendation with the amendment of the minimum reserve policy to 22%.
Staff recommendation with the 22% is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Adjusting the, to 22% and the rest of the staff recommendation.
So, just for clarification, so, moving the, the reserve policy from 20 to 22, but still keeping that, the other semi-flexible supplemental policy for emergencies, and that's from 22?
1% from 22 to 23.
Okay.
Basically, right? And the rest of the policy.
Okay.
To me, it's, you, you, choose your pile, is the way I look at it. So, I'm fine with it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion second. Annette, did you understand that motion?
Yes, sir. I was just wondering, who moved again?
It was, uh...
Does, does Councilwoman Trotter?
Vice Mayor Trotter.
Second by Councilwoman Nellis. Please vote. Thank you for the debate.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
I have three speakers, sir. Brenda Hammond. A reminder, everybody has three minutes.
Welcome.
Hi, Brenda Hammond here. I want to have fun now. I know you guys have to get serious about this stuff. So, I'm not used to, this is my first time being in Santee City Council meeting. I usually go to Lemon Grove, La Mesa, and Alcohene. But I'm completely com- I usually go to Lemon Grove, La Mesa, and Alcohene, but I'm completely comfortable. My first house we purchased in Santee in 1980. Actually, we bought it in Lakeside, and then a couple of months later, we became Santee Address. It was kind of weird. But I want to say how beautiful and everything's changed so much since then. Of course, I've been out here to the concerts. But I, and I also want to say, when I walked this morning, I walked, actually walked over to the YMCA to see how far it was going to be. I'm visiting right now for a few weeks, so right across the street. So I, but I want to say when I came back, when I went to talk with staff, everybody was so nice and, you know, gave me a I love Santee button to go with my other buttons from other cities. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to spending a few weeks here like a vacation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill McDonnell?
McDaniel.
McDaniel.
Welcome.
We live in the Hill Creek area. We've been there since 1986. On May 25th, there was a concert that was at the drive-in. I don't know if any of you live in the Hill Creek area, but it was just unbearable. The, we called the sheriff, the sheriff told us the permit was issued till 2 o'clock in the morning. There were three stages, 20 bands, according to the website for this concert. I just, I just wanted to, the people to, I just wanted to know how that happened. I mean, this is a bedroom community, that's an industrial area. I, I was, I'm under the understanding that it wasn't the new owners of the property, it was the old owners of the property that did this. So I don't know if that was a big finger to the council and the city of Santee or what they did, but I just don't think anything like this should happen again. It was just unbearably loud. It couldn't have been in the noise regulations. There was a laser show, there were lasers that were shooting into the river bottom, which from what I understand is against the, the federal protection laws for wildlife. I don't know if they have planned, permits for that from the FAA. I, you know, don't know the situation of permits, but I just wanted to voice my opinion that I hope that something like that doesn't, isn't going to be something that's going to happen on a regular basis.
Great.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Next speaker, William Jacobs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, Honorable Council Members. My name is William Jacobs, and I work for North Palisade Partners. I want to clarify that North Palisade Partners had no involvement in the planning or operations of this event. Our company does not formally own the theater site yet. However, we are taking all actions within our power to prevent this from happening again. We are focused on having positive relationships and on being good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You, you know what, Mr. McDaniel, I really appreciate you coming forward. I didn't know if anybody would come up because, you know, sometimes when there's a, a gap between an incident and the next opportunity to talk about it, people just like, oh, well, they blow it off. Well, thank you for not doing that. I was receiving calls that evening. The next day, I was getting emails and everything on it and talked to the city manager and whatnot. We got right on it, right away. And what we, what we learned is that we did issue permits, but they violated every single aspect of those permits. And so what it does is it allows us, if somebody comes forward, especially that company, to get a permit in our city, we have absolute reason to not issue a permit like that again. And staff is very aware. Sometimes you have to, if, it's kind of a conundrum when you think about, people come in, they have a right to do certain things, they follow, they apply under the law, and you know, you just can't say, well, we don't trust you, especially if you don't have any kind of relationship with them. What we do now with this company, and we know where we can go with it, and.
Was this at art, it was supposed to be an art show, wasn't it?
No, it was music, it was.
Yeah, that's what it, that's what it was, that's why I saw the special, the special permit was, it actually came out as a, as an art show.
Well, I think that's where the.
On their website, it said that there were arts and crafts.
Yeah. Right.
Food vendors, there was alcohol vendors, and three stages and 20 payments.
Right, it did have a lot of that on there, but it didn't follow suit with any of it. And.
Saw the TUP, and it was, yeah, it said it was issued under as an art show.
So, so the first we actually knew about it, because, well, in this case, fortunately for us, we didn't live close to it. Unfortunately for you, you did. Although, you know, I'm always up that late at night, so if I would have got calls, I'd have been over there. I'd have gone over there and experienced it firsthand.
I know you did talk to my wife the next day, you called her back, which I, I really appreciate. She had called and left a message on your voicemail here.
Right.
And you had returned a call to her.
Yeah, she, she was lucky I got that message because I've seldom ever checked voicemail.
And I know there has been some other kind of off, off communications with the council from other members in that area also.
Right, yeah.
So I just wanted to officially.
Well, we appreciate it, and normally, we don't really respond during non-agenda public comment, but this is not something that we have to take council action on, but it's to help inform you and inform the rest of the community that has, you know, a complaint about it and issues with it. And so, and, and I'm sure if I went down the road where it was going to violate any rules, the city attorney would have said, Mr. Mayor, I think you're going too far with your comments. So, so, so keep, keep in mind, we, we, we took action on that. And, you know, North Star, thank you very, I mean, Palisades, Palisades, thank you very much for coming down here. We appreciate you looking into it also because ultimately, you know, because of where you're going, people are going to blame you for it. And, you know, we don't need that kind of bad rating for you. So thanks for being here tonight to speak on it. Any other council comments or questions?
No, I mean, we, we were on it right away, though. I, I got the calls. I think your wife might have called me, too.
Yeah. She was, she was not happy. Actually, none of us worth living in that area, but that's good. All right, so thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome. Is that it for speaker slips?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to number 12, public hearing. And that's public hearing and introduction, first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Santee, California, amending a whole list of municipal codes. And we're going to hear them, so I'm not going to read them all before we go because it's just too much to read, so.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I'm going to do a little introduction, and then Tari Williams is going to make the presentation. But first of all, thank you again for supporting this effort that we've been engaged in for many years. If you recall, back in 2019, we did a comprehensive update to the code, which effectively hadn't really been comprehensively updated at all since you incorporated. So that was a massive effort, and, and we appreciate the support from council to, to do that. And since then, we've been regularly bringing you these annual updates to keep the code current with law and to address some of the technical issues or ambiguities that staff identifies or we identify or sometimes council identifies as we work through the code in the, in the year. So tonight, we'll be presenting the, the next step in that process with our annual update for 2024. I do want to note that during this fiscal year, council and staff have identified some larger questions that will take longer time to, to address. And Tari will talk about those that, that we've identified with, with the council's direction. And that's not part of our direct presentation tonight, that's not what's before you, but we will highlight some of those issues that we will be bringing back to you kind of in an orderly fashion in the next fiscal year. So with that, Tari Williams has not been before you yet. Tari has taken over the role that Tori Hester used to play for the city attorney's office, including this responsibility to work with staff and bring forward these updates to the municipal code. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tari, who will do the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I am pleased to be before you for my first time, and I will do my best to live up to the.
Move the microphone over a little bit more, please. Thank you.
I will do my best to live up to the high standards that Tori has set for me in this role. So tonight's item is a public hearing and an introduction of an ordinance to amend the zoning code found at Title 13 of the Santee Municipal Code. That's the subject of the public hearing. In addition, we will introduce a second ordinance to amend Titles 3, 8, 10, and 12 of the code. And as Sean said, this is the fourth annual update, the purpose of which is the continuous improvement, continuous compliance with law segregated from the legislative policies that we'll be reviewing here at the end, just to remind you what's in the pipeline. So the specific changes to the code are detailed in the staff report with redlined revision so you can see exactly what changes were made, and we explained why each specific change was made. Tonight, I'll offer an overview and try to address them by categories. Again, the purpose of each of the amendments is to add clarity and consistency as, and updates and reflect current law. Okay, so if I can figure out the, there we go. The first change is to Title 3 regarding revenue and finance, and this is a follow-up to changes that were made last year. Last year, it is, the purchasing authority levels for everyone were increased, and at that time, a distinction was made between the professional services agreements and all other agreements. And the city manager was granted authority to sign, to authorize and sign contracts $25,000 or less for professional services and $50,000 or less for non, for all other agreements. Staff at that time was authorized to enter into contracts up to $25,000 or, $25,000 or less. What got omitted was the distinction between professional services and non-professional services. So this year's update is simply to clarify that staff's authority levels are also segregated between professional and non-professional, and will be up to the $15,000 limit. The next title that we address is Title 8. These are all updates to the language regarding activities at city parks. They're very short and to the point, hopefully. The first is to update the definition of a skate park to recognize the fact that other wheeled, non-motorized wheeled devices also are authorized and do utilize the skate park. The next one is to update the terminology from seeing eye dog to service animal for the types of animals that can be at the, at the parks. And I will confirm for the record that a service animal does have a legal definition under both federal and state law. It is a dog that is individually trained to be of benefit, to work for or be of benefit to a person with a disability.
And is that, is that benefit just mental well-being?
No. In fact, the, let me just find the confirmed language here. It expressly excludes an animal that is just for the benefit of having it around and being with it. It's a, it's a dog that is trained.
It has to be a dog, I mean, a kangaroo or anything.
It has to be a dog. There is some federal law that says it can be a mini horse if the mini horse is trained. So.
Rob, you're referring to emotional support animal, which is a different definition under ADA than service animal.
But they, but people continue to try and push that, and that's why I'm making sure that we're all on the same page here.
Yes, so that is accurate. Okay, and then the final update to this title is to change the word stove to grill, just to modernize it a bit, and.
You wouldn't mean the grill like Flavor Flavie has, do you?
Like you guys, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Some people understood that one.
Okay, oh, yes. I think you have to wear those if you're going to, you know, be using the charcoal dispenser, is that right? That brings us to Title 10. There's four revisions to the regulations about vehicles and traffic. The first is to recognize a change in state law, and it simply designates the 20-foot area before a crosswalk as a no-stopping or parking, or technically standing, area. So we've just added that to the relevant code section. The second is to confirm that utility trailers are held to the same standard as recreational vehicles for the 72-hour parking limits on public streets. The third is to clarify that the white stripe on a curb can be located anywhere where there is a high passenger loading and unloading at places such as schools. Currently, the code just designates hotels and theaters and mailboxes, but this shows, this is intended to indicate that it can be, a white curb can be painted anywhere where there's a lot of traffic, and the limit would be a three-minute time limit for that.
Will they be posting three-minute on the curb or not?
I believe that's just, by the way, the code's written and applied, just the white curb itself indicates a, a three-minute.
I just thought it might be good to have it posted.
I don't believe there's an independent posting of that.
A lot of times, they, they mark that on the curb, actually.
Yeah, yes.
And that's something we could probably, you know, if we want to do that, you know, we can just have them, Menji, put it in documents or something.
We can consider that, Mayor, and we'll, we'll consider that and look at it from a traffic perspective, as, probably on an as-needed basis, depending on the concurrence of it.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then finally, the table of speed limits that is in the current code, the speed limits are all accurate and are not changing, but some of the road descriptions and road segments needed to be updated and adjusted. So I think I finally got those correct.
Do you have a quick example of that?
I can.
Like, for instance, you know, like difference between like a collector and things of that, what you're talking about as a description?
So I do have a slide for that, but I'll just pull up my, for example, you might have to help me here. Carlton Oaks, the roadway segment between West Hills Parkway now goes to Weathersfield Road, and the speed limit is 35. It used to end at a different earlier location. And then West, West, Weathersfield Road to Fenita Place is the next segment in line. That's also 35 minutes, or 35 miles per hour.
Okay, I get that. What I'm talking about specifically is the first part that says update road descriptions.
I'll be honest, I, that was how the description came to me. I believe it's just the road segments, it's, the road descriptions themselves did not change, and I can.
Okay. It's not important right now, but maybe later on.
It's, it's just clarifying the tables within the code to make them much more clear. And it's kind of represented that way in the staff report.
Okay.
Would you like to see the, if I can?
That, that's all right. I, I just was kind of confused that, are we calling a collector something else, or, Menji?
We're not making those changes, Mayor. I mean, we really are just basically making it clearer what the limits of the particular road segment are so that there's clarity about that. And, and staff has identified that there was some confusion in some of the road segments where they stopped, where they started, and this just clarifies it.
I will show you quickly there. This is what it now looks like. This is how the revisions will look incorporated into the full list. Okay. All right, any other questions about Title 10? That takes us to Title 12. There is one revision, and this addresses urban lot splits. And it just ensures that when an urban lot is split, that all of the resulting lots continue to have adequate emergency vehicle access as determined by the fire department. But what the, the regulation will say is there needs to be a frontage on the public street increasing from 16 feet to 20 feet, and that there's at least 150-foot-long acc. and that there's at least 150-foot-long access to each of the new parcels for emergency access. Okay. So what we've talked about so far, that will all be addressed in one ordinance. And then we'll turn now to the second ordinance in the public hearing where we discuss the zoning code changes. We've organized these into four topics. The first is what has been required by changes in law or allowed by law. The next topic will be to add clarity. The third will be to add consistency. And then the fourth is, there was a couple of different parking regulations that we just put together. So for the legal authority changes, the state law has changed. Well, let me start with the second one. The first one is that California law recognizes that a city may exempt itself from its own zoning code regulations. And so we have clarified that that is going to be how, or is how, you all approach your own construction of facilities and things like that. And so that required a change to one code section and to a couple of tables to just show that those uses are permitted in the various zoning districts. The second bullet point there is driven by a change in state law, AB 976, and it requires us to remove any owner occupancy requirement for accessory dwelling units. So we've made that change. And then this last change is we're removing a reference to the five-year trial period requiring a waiver of development impact fees for ADUs. Your code currently includes a trial period that expires at the end of September. So we're just removing the reference, and that would be that for this round for ADUs. This next grouping, then, is the clarifications of various matters. The first is we'll clarify that trailers associated with a home occupation are not allowed on the property. Right now, it says "commercial vehicles," and now we're adding trailers as well. Then we're adding, to a point already mentioned this evening, a timeframe to temporary uses to specify that they shall end by midnight. The next will be to revise the minimum vertical clearance for garage openings to seven feet. The next is to clarify that driveways for required garages shall be a minimum of 20 feet in length. Then, this is another just clarification, distinguish that multiple-family from single-family residential construction for projects that require development review. Multiple-family residential construction will require development review or an application for development review in places where a single-family residential construction might not. And then finally, to clarify that a new detached ADU must include a 2-kilowatt photovoltaic system. These next changes are intended to create consistency and then remove some unintended impediments that through experience have shown to be either difficult to enforce or apply. So the first will be to eliminate a residential site development criteria for storage spaces in the less dense zones where space limitations are not a concern. The second, revise residential, commercial, and industrial site development criteria to reduce setback requirements for trash enclosures to five feet in non-residential zones and 10 feet in residential zones. And I understand that is an increase in consistency among the code sections. Next, there will require a minor CUP, conditional use permit, for outdoor eating areas with more than 16 chairs. That will make it align with parking requirements and how the parking is determined. The next change will require that all accessory structures comply with development standards such as setbacks and heights. And finally, we're going to revise the structure setbacks to align with the building code setback of five feet. This is not to be confused with the accessory, the front yard accessory structure issue that is pending as a policy issue, so does not conflict with that. Finally, we have a few parking revisions. These are all new additions, not just amendments to existing language. The first is to require a three-foot backup space for parking stalls located at a dead end. It's just safety and caution. The next is to clarify that retail uses require the same number of parking spaces as commercial shopping centers, which is one parking space for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. Next, we'll clarify that a caretaker's residence must provide a two-car garage. And finally, require a parking demand study for any uses that are not already addressed in the code.
Where do we have caretaker's residence?
In the code?
Like, no, like practicality, oh, one? Oh, is that, oh, gotcha, okay.
That just qualifies where, you know, some places have converted a garage, for instance, to...
Beds?
Beds, yeah.
Yeah, gotcha, okay. Not what I was thinking with caretaker, right.
Okay. So the next steps will be to, in addition to taking any comments you have tonight, set this for a second hearing, for a second reading and adoption of the ordinances at your next meeting, June 26. And then here's where I wanted to point out just what we have right now in your legislative policy pipeline. This is sort of the order in which we believe they'll be brought back to you. The first is consideration of a moratorium on new car wash locations, addressing the city authority to address community events that do not obtain a special use permit or a special events permit. Then, as you know, the regulation of accessory front yard structures and carports. That will all lead to some likely changes in the building code requirements, so we'll bring those updates back at that point. And then other suggestions that have been discussed are maybe revisiting the government claim rejection process and bring you, after, you know, certain levels have been reached. So... With that, the recommendations are to open and conduct the public hearing on the ordinance amending Title 13, and introduce and conduct the first reading of that ordinance. Second, introduce and conduct the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending Titles 3, 8, 10, and 12. And finally, set the second reading for both ordinances for June 26, 2024.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
We do not have any speaker slips, questions from council. Go ahead.
I have one question about the setback, changing it to five feet. Is that for, did we decide as a council it was going to be four feet, and the state minimum is three feet? And then we're going to five feet?
The building code specifies a five-foot setback, so I'm not sure where the four-foot originally came from, but this change is intended to make it align with the building code. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
No problem. In 2007, we adopted the international codes. International codes had different setbacks. Previously, the uniform building codes, it was three-feet separation. Kind of our coastal zones, we're kind of used to that. It went to five feet. Anything less than five feet, you're building firewalls and limited openings and whatnot. So this creates more consistency in the code and the fire separation between buildings.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Erin, stay up there.
Good thing you're here tonight, huh?
No problem. Yes, sir.
No, just stay up there. You'll get to a meeting. I'll just run through a couple real quick. So the zoning clarification. So clarify trailers associated with home occupation are not allowed on property. Can you clarify what that's referencing?
Yes, so currently, the... I'm just gonna see if I can... Do you want to address it while I pull up the full change to the...
So we've received multiple complaints on, like, flatbed trailers being stored on a residential property for extended period of times, but where these trailers have, like, junk debris. And so we've received complaints when these trailers have been associated with a home occupation license. So this is basically saying that, yeah, you cannot have, for example, like a flatbed trailer on your property at your home if it's related to a home occupation business.
So this would be, if I can jump in here, so it'd be like...
So I have a combination with this right now.
Like you have a plumbing truck that is obviously a plumbing truck, and you wouldn't be able to store that on residential property, correct? Because it's a home-based business?
So you're allowed one vehicle, not to exceed one and a half tons.
Okay, so let's say that you have a trailer, and they put all the pipe on the trailer, and they got two of them.
Thank you.
So that means they have to remove at least one, because they've really extended their reach to be another commercial vehicle on a home-based business.
Right, so you could have one truck, but no trailers.
So the issue that I have with this is, I've got a trailer in my front yard, but I put my golf cart on, totally fine, it's not my business.
Right, so that...
If my business was hauling around golf carts, I couldn't have the same trailer in my front yard.
Correct, if it was associated with a home occupation.
So if you have a business license at that residence?
Correct.
Is that how this would trigger?
Right.
So if you don't have a business license, but I have 15 enclosed trailers and a flatbed trailer, and I keep on going here, I can do all that, as long as I don't have a business license associated with that address?
I mean...
It's a whole nother issue.
I understand, I'm just, I'm not trying to...
I think the reality is that this is, I think, what we're experiencing is people are using the home occupation permit as a way to trump other requirements and say, hey, this is just part of my business, so I have to have this. And so that's what they're trying to get at. But I think everyone's hearing what you're saying, which is...
There's some gray in here that needs to be addressed.
But it doesn't mean that you have to look at all of the requirements at one time, right? We're just focusing in on the home occupation issue. And again, it's not a trump card for all the other rules. But I think what we need to do is bring back to you an explanation of where, in other parts of the code, this would be addressed if you don't have a home occupation, right? And so, you see, I mean, really, what we're trying to get at is to prevent people from saying, well, I have to have, you know, these seven trailers on my property, even though it's otherwise permitted, because I have a home occupancy and you said I could do this. That's what we're trying to get to, but I think you're raising very good points about. We at the staff level need to spell that out more clearly so that it doesn't seem like we're just punishing people for home occupancy.
Yeah, because when we're legislating...
Or punishing for having a trailer on my property.
Yeah, we're legislating to the minority.
Well, but I don't...
We legislate to the minority, then nobody's really getting served there.
Understood.
Reality is, I get, if you want to say one trailer, because we're also East County. People use trailers for their sand rails, for their buggies, for everything under the sun.
Recreational vehicle, cargo trailer.
And they may have a home-based business and still have a trailer.
Exactly, so it has to be probably more specifically defined, you know, because...
I mean, you've got a big dump truck sitting in your driveway. I mean, that's pretty clear, right? You're skirting it, but we can't...
So I guess when we vote on this, we'll pull this one out and have it come back.
Or give us direction. What I'd recommend is if everything else is okay, you move the staff recommendation with the direction to clarify this issue and also bring it back with more detail. And then you may elect to pull it out completely at the second reading.
Okay.
So we understand that. And we would need to provide in the next staff report kind of a more expansive explanation of the problem we're trying to get to and how it isn't the kind of the ill that you've identified. It's not going to create that.
And I'm picturing a cargo trailer in someone's yard is with a business on it or without a business on it, you know, like, you know, clarifying this...
We'll address it.
Trailer.
And just to preface what we will bring back, this is, there are 13 conditions that need to be met to get the permit, to get the home occupancy permit. And this is just one of the conditions to get the permit, not necessarily, you know, once you get there. If you know going in that you're going to have a business with a lot of trailers, I guess.
And the next one is clarify driveways required. Garages shall have a minimum of 20-foot in length. So Carl or Sandy, I'm gonna look at you guys here, because I remember a lot of projects that we've approved, more townhome condominium type of styles like that, that have two-car garages, they don't have 20-foot driveways.
Guess we'll change that. Yeah, I think, you know, multifamily, there's a lot of other things to consider, whether it's based on state law or not. This is traditionally for a single-family residential home so that we can park two cars. That was kind of council's direction. 19-foot to 20-foot is a standard parking stall. The intent is so that we have the ability to park two cars in the front driveway for a typical residential development.
So doesn't it say single-family residence in clarity, or is that too much detail?
It's also a high-density residential.
Okay. I'm just looking at an example of how that doesn't meet that, that stuff we built, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to, you know, parking is a big problem. We're trying to make sure...
I agree with this, it should be 20 feet and 20-inch garage.
It's not staff making the decision, this is codified in the code. That way, there's no discretion by staff or anybody else, if that makes sense.
So the next question I had was revise residential commercial to reduce the setbacks for trash enclosures, five feet, 10 feet. I remember the Habitat for Humanity question, we talked about this trash enclosure here. Is this different than that? Like, is that, because that was on a variance and this is not, is that...
I think we experienced a couple of recent conditions, constrained sites, for example, where they're trying to put it right on property line.
That's where I'm getting to here.
So we're trying not to allow that, because we want to move it as far away from residents or other businesses, so that's the goal here.
And this provides that, this was not in the code, obviously, before when we were reviewing it. So that was one of the lessons that we learned, and we wanted to put it in the code now.
So this I agree with, because I think that obviously we need to get there. And then Erin, where'd you go? Yeah, I know. So building code updates, I just want to get real quickly, and this may go to Sandy even, too. Where are we at with building code updates? We usually see every three years, we've got building code updates, MEPs, Title 24. What year are we in with those right now? Because I want to think about, as we do these updates, that we do them congruent with that, not necessarily just because we're doing a Muni Code update.
Correct, so we adopted the 2022, which became effective in 2023. Add the three years to that, it'll be, we'll have a new 2025 code that'll become effective in 2026. We'll have our meetings next year with the code updates. Right now, come July 1st, are is our mid-triennial code updates, which are automatic by the state, just changes in the code, clarifications. So next summer, I'll be before you with the new codes to discuss, and then hopefully we'll adopt them, and then come January 1st, they'll be effective for 2025. Yes.
And what's our flexibility on that? Can we defer some things if we wanted to, can we not? What is our options?
You can amend any section in the code within the parameters that have been set up for geographic, topographic conditions. As far as administrative code, you can pretty much do what you're pleased to do in the administrative part. It's not a technical part of the code. So if there's something that you want to...
I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Ron?
Could you explain the parking for commercial? Clarify the retail use, how does that compare with other cities? The number of parking spaces per square feet?
I'll let staff answer how it compares to other cities, but I do know that right now, this isn't a technical change, it's just highlighting that retail establishments are the same as commercial.
Yeah, we're not changing the requirement. So right now, the retail use falls under, like, a shopping center requirement, which is one space per 250. So we're just adding it as a new category that a retail use, so like a standalone retail use, has to comply with the one space per 250, but it's not a change, it's the same, it's just like a new category.
Yeah, well, I just want to know how it compared to other cities and how that's going to handle with cannabis people coming in.
I don't know how it compares to other cities.
We can do that research, though, and bring it back.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
This is what that change will look like.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion if we need one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. Wait a second for Rob to get back. We're just kind of giving Councilmember McNallyson opportunity to weigh in.
I'll just wait to make sure there's no last minute.
We're waiting for you to vote.
I voted.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That takes us to item number 13, public area for conditional use permit for a drive-through only coffee shop on a 0.39 acre vacant lot at 8606 Quimaca Street in the general commercial zone and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, and pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15303. The applicant is 2525 Ramona Elsie. Sandy?
Thank you.
Oh, Rachel, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I know that, I was here yesterday.
Yeah. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Rachel Underbrecky with the Planning and Building Department, and tonight's item for your consideration is a request for a conditional use permit for a drive-through only coffee shop located at 8606 Quimaca Street. Okay, the vacant 0.39 acre site is located at the northwest corner of Quimaca Street and Prospect Avenue in the general commercial or GC zone. Surrounding land uses include an industrial trades training center to the north, a commercial office building to the south, and then a wide variety of other commercial uses both to the east and west. The project site is also located approximately 400 feet from Gillespie Field Airport and is within the airport influence area one, airport safety zone two. Due to the project's location, both the Federal Aviation Administration and the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority Land Use Commission reviewed the proposed project and determined that the project as designed and conditioned presents no hazards to air navigation and is conditionally consistent with the Gillespie Field Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. This aerial is looking northeast towards the project site outlined here in yellow. General commercial zones are present on three sides of the site, to the north across Quimaca Street, to the east, and across Prospect Avenue to the south, and light industrial zones are located directly west and northwest of the project site. And then this view is looking southwest, specifically from Quimaca Street, towards the project site. The project consists of a 1,294 square foot drive-through coffee shop. The building layout is designed for drive-through services only, so the interior layout will include service and work areas, a wash area, restrooms, office, and storage area. The building would be located on the northwest portion of the site with ingress and egress provided by a single driveway located along Prospect Avenue. There would be no access provided off Quimaca Street. A one-lane drive-through entrance would be provided and traffic would queue around the building towards the menu board and allow for a total of 12 queued vehicles within the designated drive-through lane and an additional three vehicles in the parking lot before reaching Prospect Avenue. A total of nine parking spaces would be provided on-site and landscaping would be provided along the site perimeter, including around the building and surface parking lot. The exterior building design features a parapet roof that varies in height, with the tallest architectural feature extending 19 feet above finished floor. A variety of exterior finishes are proposed, including stucco, metal, and cement, all in neutral color tones. Staff has determined the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15303 because the project is consistent, consisting of the construction of a commercial building less than 2,500 square feet in floor area for the use as a drive-through only coffee shop. Through review of the project and project site, it was determined that none of the exceptions to the exemption found in SEQA Guideline Section 15300.2 apply to the project. Therefore, staff recommends the city council conduct and close the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project by adopting the resolution before you. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project and answer any questions, and this concludes staff's presentation and staff is also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I have one. The parking spaces are, but there will be no public access other than drive-through?
That's correct.
No tables, so if somebody is, so you couldn't stop and just get a coffee then, right?
That's correct.
That won't be very, to some of the businesses, that's probably not real convenient.
What? What do you mean? What?
Well, the businesses around that area.
Well, there's.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
The business is around that area, it's not my job to worry about that anyway, but it just seems like they should have some kind of walk-up window or, or at least a table out front, people could sit there and have a cup of coffee, because they have the training center next door, they have, you know, other areas too, so it just doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's fine.
It's, I think this is the same as, same design as the one that's over by Ullman Factory.
Actually, there's tables and walk-up service.
Is it that one?
Yeah, it's walk-up service.
Is there any other one in the city that we have? No?
Let's see, that's why I'm bringing up the question, so.
I guess maybe a question would be, the reason for this probably is because of the traffic impacts there?
It is within 400 feet of Gillespie Field as well, so as part of the conditionally consistent piece, no outdoor seating is permitted.
Oh.
At this location.
Answers that.
I guess that, yeah, excellent. We don't have any other speaker slips?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a second, please vote. Good job, Rachel.
Motion carries unanimously.
Where's the applicant? Can you raise your hand? Good job. And welcome. Okay, I think we're going to item number 14, which is, does anybody need a break before we get into this, start this? Well, then, we're going to go to item number 14, review of the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2024, '25. Who's going to give us a introduction? Or are you just going to jump straight into it, Heather?
Mr. Mayor, I've been asked by our finance director to give a brief intro regarding current status on the city council priorities, so I'm going to try to go through that very quickly. Then I will pass the presentation over to Heather Jennings, our finance director. For the public, this is a workshop, there's no action item for the city council tonight. Some members of the council have not had the opportunity to discuss this item with staff, nor has the council as a body had a chance to discuss it amongst all of them, so this is an opportunity for us to hear input from the council on what their desires are. It's my hope that from, for the city council, that you can see that your staff team, even though they're kind of thin, they're dedicated to perform well for you and for the citizens of the city of Santee. The council establishes goals and priorities every two years and staff uses these priorities to guide operations of the city, along with other required obligations of local government. The council had 10 priorities in their last term and three additional items to have staff work on accomplishing. So I'm going to just run through these real quickly. One of those is to make improvements to the fire station and facilities. I think this council is well aware that there's been a lot of work related to fire stations, operations, and services with a temporary station that's on your agenda, new fire station design in process, we have the squad vehicle, we have EMTs that we've brought on board now, we have a number of other improvements in our BLS ambulance service, as well as both the sheriff's department and the fire department have cool ATV-like Polaris units that can get on the trails and improve public safety. So fires, facilities, fire station facilities and services have gone a long way, but we still have more to do, which is evident in our community. Another opportunity council wanted to look at as a priority was consider annexation of West Hills Parkway. Staff has not had a full opportunity to be able to do the analysis of the infrastructure of West Hills Parkway right now because we've been focusing more on the fire station issues, so we hope to get more to your second priority in this coming fiscal year. As council's aware, the council has approved and encouraged funding that goes to a total of $4 point million every year, this past year and this coming year, and those monies are currently set aside to expand on road paving and other infrastructure. And engineering continues to bring forward a workshop with the council every year to make sure we get council priorities when we make those decisions going forward. Expanding and diversifying economic development through arts and entertainment, neighborhood and cannabis implementation, as council's also aware, we have the Town Center Specific Plan underway, cannabis is just about ready, we're waiting on that final document from the sheriff's department before we can start accepting some applications and moving forward with the four retail businesses, as well as other types of cannabis businesses that council has approved. In addition to that, there are a number of other things that staff is working on with various types of breweries, wineries, entertainment uses, and we are still talking to some theater operators, believe it or not, to try to see what we can do in the arts and entertainment area. Another goal was to, if we go to the next slide, another goal was to implement an automated permit system and managed information system, including new website redesign and future financial system update. The council here is aware, we hope the community is aware, that we do have an automated permit system called Intergov. One of the benefits that that also brought our community is it brought a new app, a service app, that you can use on your phone to contact the city and make reports. Our new website is currently in redesign and is going out for a soft opening right now, it will be live by the end of this month, so we're excited about that. And we do have in the budget for next year, the future financial system update because council authorized the funding for that at last mid-year. We continue to focus on positive solutions to homelessness and risk reduction in the riverbed specifically. I previously mentioned the two cool new units that the sheriff's department and fire department have to be able to utilize in the river for safety. We are trying out new camera systems currently at Town Center Community Park to see if we can establish, pardon me, expand those out to the trail systems themselves, and we are working on a variety of other issues pursuant to item number six that gets us to homelessness. We do have an encampment working group now that includes the county of San Diego, Livwell San Diego, the San Diego River Park Foundation, as well as our staff team to look at how we coordinate encampment cleanups in the riverbed so we don't have duplicative services. We want to make sure that we're moving those things forward and not wasting taxpayer dollars or staff time from any agency. Looking at improvements for the trailhead at Mission Trails Regional Park, I think council's aware, we did have a really great plan that was put forward by community services and our CIP team, that has been approved through the county, but we're still looking to see if we can get some state money to be able to move that forward. Enhance and implement safety on the trails, again, we have the cool items with potentially new cameras that we're trying to get, as well as the other vehicles to get us down into the riverbed. As we continue to clean up homelessness in the riverbed, that will also encourage more safety. We're still waiting to see if we have the FEMA grant that will allow us to clean and create defensible space in the river corridor. Next slide. Item number 10 was continue to reduce the CalPERS unfunded liability. We've made several payments in addition to our regular annual payments for CalPERS Retirement Fund here in the state of California, and the city, through auspices of the city council, have allowed for another $600,000 for the last four years or five years, and we do have another opportunity to do that, proposed in the budget for this coming year. Complete a development impact survey, that is currently underway right now, the report is in and staff is looking at that, we hope to bring that forward to the council early in this fall period, and then as soon as that's done, finance department will start working on a user fee study with the hope of completing that within the next fiscal year. Other projects of interest that the council asked staff to continue working on, even though they're not priorities, but certainly are issues council want to focus on, affordable housing efforts. As council's aware, the Town Center Specific Plan that you have heard a number of presentations on includes many other areas for affordable housing here in our community. The city has also adopted a land use plan surrounding the historic barn that includes affordable housing and changes it from its previous usage of a commercial industrial site, and we are still working with the Habitat for Humanity on their entitled project, they are working with staff on getting funding available to move that project forward for affordable housing. The grant writer position council asked for has been put in place. Bill Crane, our senior management analyst, has taken on additional duties to become the grant writer position for the city of Santee, and we did expand the Hometown Heroes banner successfully into a third year of the program with the city council authority to allow for participant requirements being expanded so they don't necessarily have to be residents of Santee, they can live, work, or play here and/or be a part of our adopted marine units to get recognized as the Hometown Heroes banners. Those, I think, are the highlights of what we've done in the last year and what we'd like to see in this year's budget and move forward. Again, I will turn it over to Heather to present the program, and we're all available to help answer questions and hear direction from council following Heather's presentation.
Thank you. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is the, obviously, the proposed budget, we'll get into the meat and potatoes of all the items in the budget. So we'll start out with talking about some key revenues, and we've got some key expenditures impacting our current and future budgets, I will talk about the budget highlights by department, we'll look at a five-year forecast, and then we'll take a look at some high-impact other funds. So after the presentation tonight, there will be obviously an opportunity for discussion and questions from city council or the public. We will take what, any updates or suggestions, and then come back next, next council meeting, June 22nd, with updates and, and adoption. So the 2425 proposed budget is a balanced budget, we have a, currently a reserve balance of 21.42%. This next line might not be relevant anymore, but available amount over 20% was 859,000. So in creating the budget, we were lucky, you know, we continued to see modest growth in property tax and sales tax. We also took, you know, took a good look at what was going on in the, in the economy and the uncertainties that we are facing that were already brought to light earlier. Inflation remains elevated, things cost more than it seems like they should, we've got high mortgage rates, this is leading, you know, to limited inventory and lack of turnover, this directly affects our property tax revenue. We've got, there are signs that consumer confidence is, is not, is, is, is getting, what's the word, is waning, yes, thank you. We started off the year, the calendar year, with each month having like a downturn in consumer confidence, May, luckily, we, there was an uptick, not a lot, but still people are concerned with the price of, of things and primarily like food and groceries, so that still is looming, and then something that's not on here but is very relevant. And then something that's not on here, but is very relevant, of course, is our geopolitical issues going on in the country and the world. So with all that and looking forward, I wanted to kind of show some of the things that we know we'll be facing in future, future budget years. We've got the sheriff, sheriff contract fees, 2425, which is what we're proposing, which is in the proposed budget that you will see, 17.7 million. That's year three of a five-year agreement and 3.5%. Years four and five also are increasing 3.5%. This is about $600,000 per year of an increase. Our CalPERS costs this year, they definitely increased. So the rates that we will be, that you'll see a little bit later, those are based on the investment return, CalPERS investment return at 6302022. CalPERS had a 6.1 negative, or 6.1% loss that year on that date. So it's definitely affecting, it'll affect this year and then future years due to the amortization period. So looking forward to the year after, 202526, the investment return at 63023 was 5.8, which is a lot better than a negative 6.1, but is still less than CalPERS discount rate of 6.8. So we're still, we're still have a little bit of a loss. I was able to speak with CalPERS on a different issue last week, and the current return rate that they're looking at right now is 8.9. So that at least, if we can hold on to that till 6302024, that'll help us in future years. Other future items to consider, as mentioned, we will be doing a fee study next year. This is, this is pretty important. We've changed the way we conduct business with Intergov in particular, so we need to make sure that we're covering the costs of the services that the city provides. So that'll be, that'll be, you know, an important thing. It was mentioned earlier, too, we've got cost of living increases or maybe negotiations, or not maybe, but negotiations. And then medical liability, workers' comp, property insurance, everything is increasing by double digits in those areas. So with that, cheery, oh, cheery forecast there. This is a snapshot here of our budget for 2425, our proposed budget. Our revenues are expected to be 62.3 million. This is about 4.4% higher than our current year estimated revenues. Expenditures, 60.6 million. These are about 6% higher than our current year budget. This brings us with a revenue over expenditures of a little over 1.6 million. Because we have that, that extra there, we're able to, you know, do some of our regular transfers and set aside funds for, for future uses. We've got our regular transfers to other funds, which include the vehicle replacement, technology replacement, Highway 52. We've got a transfer to the CIP program. This would be, this unfunded liability to CalPERS would be our fourth consecutive year of making this payment, and then an inaugural set aside for turf replacement of 100,000. So at the end of the day, this leaves us with 238,000 to add to fund balance. So a projected fund balance at 63025 of just a little shy of 13 million. So this is a graph of our, just our revenue trends. The blue line there is our, would be our audited 2223 revenues. The yellow there is our current year estimated revenues, and the green is the, are the proposed revenues. You can see that we're seeing, you know, good trending, you know, increasing in major revenues especially. And so our major revenue source is the, excuse me, is property tax. And this year, it's about 42.1% of all the general fund revenues. Our estimate is 26.2 million. This is $1 million more than our current year estimate, and it's based on an increase in assessed valuation of 4.3%. Our next revenue source is sales tax, and in this budget, it is 32% of the general fund revenues. We're estimating just a little bit shy of $20 million, and that represents about 400,000 more than what we're currently expecting for this year or a 2% increase. We continue to see growth in building and construction and as well as the county pool. The other, the other categories, we're seeing some growth, just not as, as large as those, those two categories up there. Other notable revenues are franchise fees, seven, or excuse me, 4.17 million. This is about $125,000 increase. We're still seeing increases in waste management and SDG&E, but AT&amp;T and Cox, we see decreases consistently every year. Charges for services, this whole, this is a category, and it's got many different revenue accounts in it, but it is increasing this year significantly, 8.5 million, which is about $908,000 more than the previous year, primarily due to money that's coming in, that was, money that's coming in from the EMS fund, which is money earned from SLMSA, to, to fund the EMS department that's sitting in the general fund. We're also, another notable revenue is building permit and plan check fees. We've got projected at 1.3 million. This is a decrease from where we're expecting to end the year this year, but we just, we try to stay conservative with this account because we don't really know what the market will, will bring or what the demand will bring. So this could definitely go up. So the next slide is our, is the general fund expenditures. We'll dive into that. The pie chart here is a representation of how the, how the budget is, is divided by function there. We've got, you can see the public safety amount. All the others would be all the, you know, finance, city manager, city attorney, et cetera, and then planning and building is about 5%. Engineering's about 5%, and community service is about 12%. So our total budget is, operating budget is 60.6 million. This is a 3.5 million dollar increase over the current budget. Primarily what makes up this 3.5 increase are our personnel, EMT, the EMT trial, which we'll talk about a little bit later, insurance costs, open space element, which is part of the general plan, PSD, maintenance projects, the sheriff contract, and the building contract. So we'll dive into the personnel costs. It's probably the biggest part of this budget, so we'll get going here. So included in the proposed budget is a 4% salary increase across the board. This includes the negotiated Santee Firefighters Association, all general, all general and management employees, and city council. Okay, and then, so we also have a funding change where we will be moving the, propose to move the senior management analyst, grant coordinator, or grant writer. I've got it listed as grant coordinator, but it's the same position. We'll be moving that position out of planning and engineering into the city manager department, and this will happen after the retirement of the assistant to the city manager. And the estimated savings to the general fund is about $86,000. Also included in the budget are some reclassifications of current personnel. We have a, a couple of management analysts that we would like to increase to senior management analysts. We have one in finance, and we have one in fire. Both of these positions are already doing senior management analyst work, and the need for that quality and expertise is, is, is important for both departments. In the finance department, the management analyst currently is doing, is doing complicated forecasting, budget analysis, prepare, preparation of audit materials, complex finance, excuse me, financial analysis for both the city and SLMSA, and she quasi-supervises the payroll depart, or the payroll. The cost for this position to upgrade would be 11,450. 50% of this position is, also is funded by SLMSA. The next position would be the management analyst in fire. This position already, currently, is involved in the development and monitoring of the departmental budget, preparation of the agenda, of agenda items, analysis on complex fiscal personnel and operational manners, and supervision. This also is, the cost of this position upgrade would be 11,450, and this position is 40% funded by SLMSA. The third reclassification would be the admin secretary in human resources, reclassifying that position to a confidential admin secretary. This designation of confidential aligns with the duties in the HR department, and this would be about a $4100 increase to the budget. So the next group of personnel costs that we want to talk about are the addition of positions. The first position here is the associate planner. So this, this planner would be tasked with managing the cannabis program and environmental issues facing the city. So the position would support the cannabis program, sorry, and discretionary environmental applications and other environmental, environmental-related items. The cost of this position is 129,000 and would be funded jointly by cost recover, cost recovery from cannabis and developer, developer deposits, and, as well as the general fund. There might be projects that this, this associate planner would work on that, that are not cannabis or developer deposits, so there might be a general fund component there as well. The next position is an engineering development services technician. This position is costed out to be about 98,000. It would be some, it would be another person up at the front counter at Building 4, available to help customers and keep, and also clear up some of the engineer's time when they have to go up to the front counter, so they can focus more on doing, working on CIP projects and land development. This would be general fund funded with the opportunity for some cost recovery. The next item, and this is the, up above here, I talk about the addition of eight net full-time positions. This next position is the net. This is the senior management analyst that would replace the senior management analyst, grant coordinator that's going over to the city manager's department. So this, this would backfill, backfill that position. So once, once the assistant to the city manager retires, this would, these two positions will kind of wash out. And then the next group of additional positions would be the addition of the, of six 24-hour shift EMTs. This is a limited term, one-year study. The cost is 594,000 and is funded by SLMSA. And what this would do is it would convert the city's current ambulance staffing model from two firefighter paramedics per ambulance to one EMT and one firefighter paramedic per ambulance. This would allow the movement of two firefighter paramedics per shift to the squad vehicle, and the squad vehicle would then be able to go out on ALS call. And then finally, we have some market adjustments that are being proposed. Earlier this year, human resources did a comprehensive compensation study on non-represented, non-elected, Santee positions, and they compared compensation with all of the other cities in San Diego County, the 18 cities. Through that analysis, they found that there were six positions that were below median. So what this does is it brings these six positions up to median. The cost of these market adjustments is about $25,000 in total. So CalPERS retirement cost, so we kind of touched on this. Our, the CalPERS costs for 2425 are projected to be 7.1 million. This is an $848,000 increase. 4.5 million is, represents payments against the unfunded liability. And as I mentioned, the negative 6.1 investment return is really driving a large portion of this. And also, as I mentioned, we are proposing an additional, additional discretionary payment of 600,000. This would be the fourth consecutive year. I wasn't able to get some information from CalPERS, and they gave me an estimation. So so far, we have contributed 1.7 million, so the years one through three. They said that with that 1.7 million, we are saving about 2.1 million in interest. So it is potentially, you know, it is working. So on to the general fund departments, these are typically, these are basically non-personnel highlights. City council, total budget, 555,000. City attorney, 893,000. City manager, 1.5 million. Information technology, 959,000, includes increases in software maintenance and licensing costs, which is to be expected. Animal control, 464,000. This is year two of a three-year agreement. The contract has gone up 22,000, which is consistent with the CPI increase. City clerk, 739,000. This includes 124,000 dollar increase for the November 2024 election, and a $25,000 increase for Laserfish Document Management System, which is a replacement of the current system we have right now, which is, is pretty old. Human resource and risk management, we've got a budget of 1.9 million. This includes $160,000 for, for anticipated increases in liability and property insurance premiums. Finance, 1.8 million. This includes 43,000 for consulting assistance for the financial system, RFP. Engineering, 3.2 million. Planning and building, we've got 3.1 million. This includes 156,000 for work related to the general plan update, specifically the open space conservation element. We were, when, when preparing the budget, we were approached with the need for a general plan update. The cost was more than 1.6 million, so we were able to break it up into a six-year period and kind of spread out the costs. So this is the first, the first part of that update. And for building, there's an increase in contract services cost due to the number of new non-legacy permits forecasted in the upcoming year. Community services, 7 million. We have money in the budget for place service replacement at Shadow Hill Park, 109,000. We've got update, money for fire station four updates, which include bay door replacements and bunk room doors, synthetic field cool-off sprinklers. And then this budget is also affected by the CPI and, CPI increase. There's, there are multiple contracts that this, this department manages. Law enforcement, 17.8 million. We talked about the increase to the sheriff contract, 597,000, and this budget also includes cities, the city's financial support towards the school resource officer at West Hills and Santana High School, and that's 223,980. Fire is, their budget is 20.6 million. We, we talked about the EMTs included in their, in this budget, or the non-personnel portion, would be a $19,500 for a scheduling and timesheet software update, and about 14,000 for equipment for type one engine. Other increases include medical supplies and agency contributions. So other uses, these are our transfers and, and other, other non-departmental charges. We have funding for capital improvement program. This is the ADA parking lot at West Hills Park, $300,000. Transfers to other funds include vehicle replacement, technology replacement fund. We transfer $70,000 to that fund every year and build up a balance so that when we do an upgrade, you know, we have enough, enough there to do a big update in all at once. Highway 52 Coalition Fund, 44,000. There's the $600,000, or 600,000 additional discretionary payment, and then artificial turf replacement. This is, we're hoping to make this an annual set aside so that we can accumulate enough funds in 10 years when the useful life of the turf is, that, that we can replace it. So here is the five-year projection. The first column is our current year that we're in right now. The next column is obviously the, the budget, the projected, or the proposed budget. So in years three, four, and five, those are actually, you know, part of the ongoing projection. The assumptions are property tax. The assumptions are property tax at three point five per year, three point five percent increase, sales tax at three percent increase. All of the other revenues are either, they're between two and four percent based on whether they're driven by personnel or not. We've got all of our additional payments that we make. We've got the ADP. We've got the seventy thousand dollars to the Technology Replacement Fund, the Artificial Turf Set Aside. We have a CIP contribution listed here every other year, kind of in line with the adopted CIP Budget Program, how we do it every two years. You can see that our reserve amount continues to grow. So it's a stable budget. Will it turn out that way? I don't know, but probably not, not quite like that, but it's still conservative. So the other funds that I'd like to go through are the Vehicle Acquisition Replacement Fund, Gas Tax Fund, and Flood Control Fund. So the proposed vehicles this year, we just have one purchase and that's actually just a remount of one of our existing ambulances, two hundred thousand dollars. And then, of course, this is funded by funds received by SLMSA. And we have two new leases proposed through the Enterprise Fleet Management. We have a Ford F-250 for PSD Landscape Maintenance. This vehicle would be in addition to our current fleet. It's for the new position, it's for the position that was added last fiscal year for the Landscape Irrigation Technician, I believe. I think so, one of those. And the next one is a four-transit F-150 for PSD, and this is a replacement for our current The next fund is the Gas Tax Fund. We have, as you know, this is money received from the state of California that's restricted for roads and street purposes. We have a projected revenue amount of one point six million and an operating budget of one point six million. And then we have money set aside in that for, in that fund, in that budget for traffic calming devices. And finally, the Zone Two Flood Control District. This is a property tax allocation, used for activities required by the municipal stormwater permit. Our projected revenue is four hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and ten and we're proposing to spend seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand ninety. We have accumulated a bit of fund balance in that fund, so we're able to kind of offset some costs that typically are picked up by the general fund and go ahead and pick them up from this fund. So thank you for letting me present the budget. I'd like to open it up for any City Council questions, public input, discussion, and then we will be back June twenty-eighth or twenty-sixth for Budget of Jobs, one of those days.
Okay, we do not have any speaker slips. I'm going to go ahead and ask a couple of questions and make a couple of statements first. One is, I wanted to talk about the CalPERS costs, retirement costs, because I think a lot of people don't understand them, especially when we start talking about unfunded liability and what that means. And if I'm not spot on with this, please correct me. But to explain this, what happens is, for instance, we would pay for all of the employees here to have a retirement, okay? And that comes up to, is part of that seven point one million dollars. Subtract out the four point five million, which is the unfunded. So we're really only paying two point six million into retirement cost, okay? But what happens is that CalPERS makes investments every year and you talked about how they were negative six point one in their investment two years ago. And so what we have to do is we have to make up the difference for the losses and that's called the unfunded liability essentially. So if you add that to what they didn't make towards their six point eight for this year or last year, then we have to make up the distance difference also, and that's part of the unfunded liability. And so a lot of people don't understand how that works, but it's like this. You go to your banker or your investment broker and you say, I want to take a hundred thousand dollars, invest it, and at the end of the year, I want to be able to make six point eight percent. Well, the difference is that you don't actually make the six point eight percent because it doesn't do as well in that fund. So let's say it's actually minus five percent. Well, how do you get that, you know, hole again? Well, what you would ask your investment broker is, since you didn't make the six point eight percent, you need to pay me the five percent that we didn't, that was minus, plus the six point eight percent. And generally, your investment broker is going to say, no, it doesn't work that way, I'm not paying you. But that's the way it works in this retirement game that CalPERS plays. So that's why we have to pay an unfunded liability because they didn't make their investments. Does that sound about right?
That sounds pretty good, yeah.
All right. So basically, and I bring this up every time, and I talk about this because not everybody understands, but really what it is, is theft from each city and county in the state of California that's in CalPERS. So that's my little soapbox. But that ought to really irritate a lot of people to hear it and describe like that because your tax dollars are paying for their poor investment, management of investments. So the other thing, I want to go on to something a little bit different, is the information technology. And, you know, we're like so many organizations that try and save as much money as we can, especially when it comes to, you know, new computers, new software, firewalls and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, recently, we've become the victim, just like many municipalities and counties throughout this country where people attack your service. And so there's some good money put into this, it looks like, but what I want to say is that we should never really, you know, try and save money beyond what's reasonable for our technology because the fact is that especially people who are doing business with our city and provide information that could be used for identity theft purposes, we should protect them at every step of the way. And so if we have to throw extra money into information technology protection and things of that nature, I think we should be looking at that going forward to make sure that we have more than enough if necessary. And I know it's difficult to say, you know, keep throwing money, keep throwing money, but the bottom line is, what's more important? You know, saving a couple bucks here or protecting the identity of people that do business with us so they're not victims? That's just my two cents on that soapbox. So council members, questions, comments? Oh, Ron, you're on the speaker list.
Well, I'm big on security and I've requested the flock cameras to come into town. They're not in the budget. I would like to look at maybe a trial version of that. They're paying off in many other cities in East County where the only ones at this point that they're not being used. And it's important, I think, to keep the citizens safe and it's important to keep retail safe. And I think we need to look at this a little more seriously for the future that we have, these are literally finding sex offenders and they're finding many, many, many felons and different people like that. So it's, they're working in El Cajon, they're now in La Mesa, they're now in, I think even a couple of others, I'm not sure which ones, but I know they're all around and we're the ones that aren't participating at this point. So I'd like to just try it out. If we get four cameras, we get four cameras. We get, you know, sometimes I've heard as much as forty cameras. I don't think, I think that's, in our town, it's way too much, but actually, El Cajon has them because they're going both, yeah, they're going both directions. And so it's important, at least we get a trial in just to see what, how it does. And it's very overall inexpensive compared to, you know, crime and people come shopping here because it's safe. And that's the important part. It is safe to shop here. They're coming from many different communities into our town and we need to keep it that way. So that's my suggestion, that we add at least a trial in there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? No? Councilmember McNellis?
Here we go. I'm going to jump all the way into page three.
You don't want to start at the beginning?
Yeah. Don't waste time with page one and two. Yeah. We go through these every year, we go through them line by line, and, you know, it's jumping all around. For those of you in the gallery, these are, this is our annual budget. It's not a small document, it's a big set of documents and it is broken down in each department, but in the very beginning is where we have like the general fund revenue detail. And I just noticed, you know, of course, we want to, we always want to look at where we're going to lose revenue first. So the things that are in parentheses and, you know, and then combine that to each department reporting and see that when we have reduction in revenues in certain departments, but then the same departments are asking for increase in employees, that just, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So if we're going to have less money coming in because there's less business coming in, then why would we need more employees in these departments? And I know one of them is the building, is a building department and I know someone's ever going to bring up the cannabis application and that process. That's a one-time process. That is, that's, it is going to be a little labor-intensive to get that all done and I totally understand that, but that's not, that's not a moving forward every single day, month, week, year type of deal. Moving forward, there will be a review, an annual review, understand that, but that's not a full-time position. I heard the city manager say that they're also going to do, or I'm sorry, our finance director state that they're going to also do some environmental stuff, but reality is that I think that stuff is, can still be taken care of by the, by the staff that's already there. So this is one of the things that I've definitely got some concerns over. And I mean, same thing in planning. Just, we've got lost, got a loss there, but we're still asking for more people. Let me go into council. I had a question on retirement for the City Council, so sorry, page twelve. Unfunded liability there, is that for previous members of the council that like, or is it still, it's like I said, I guess it is still part and parcel of the overall PERS breakdown, it's just broken down by our department?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's based on number of employees. It's the unfunded liability that's accumulating, it's not current retirement costs.
Gotcha. And for the record, because when you, when you throw these numbers up there, especially when we go into, you know, go to the council and it shows, you know, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the council, unfortunately for us, that's not our salaries. Salaries, it's a total between the mayor and the council, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand, so that's everybody altogether besides other staff members that we share. So I just want to make sure everybody knows, we're not, we're not making a hundred grand up here, unfortunately.
Well, in our secretary we share, where I think the city of San Diego has like eight employees that they do. They have MTS, the, when each council member comes up, their staff brings the notebook that we're going to look at that day and they put it right in front of the desk so they have it in front of them.
I'm going to go to, going to go to the city manager now. And page twenty-seven, we've got, it looks like we're increasing, we're increasing by one employee, but the jump in wages is from, from this time last year when we're proposing it, is only going up thirty thousand dollars? Actually, check, it's going down overall. So it looks to me, and somebody tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but it looks to me like you've removed the cost of the Assistant to the City Manager, as we know that our Assistant to the City Manager is going to be retiring, removed that cost altogether, added back in a Senior Management Analyst Grant Coordinator, but didn't remove the title of Assistant to City Manager.
So we're not able to remove it. So since that, since she'll be here for some part of the fiscal year, whether it be a month or however long, we still have to have that position in the budget or else we cannot pay her?
Oh, we definitely want to pay, well. Would you? All right.
So, I mean, I kind of see like at mid-year coming back and then removing that position, so it's, it's just an anomaly just because of the rules.
It just looks, I'm just being honest, it looked a little disingenuous there.
I agree.
That we're not, we're not removing that or even italicizing it or, you know, an asterisk or something that lets us all know that, okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because I don't really want to come back later and go, well, have somebody go, well, you know, that was always in the budget, the position was always in the budget, you guys approved it, and that's, when that's not really the case.
Yes, well, we will add that, we'll add an asterisk and an explanation.
And then, you know, I totally understand, we've got cost of living increases, we have that four percent increase. I get that there are some, there are some increases here, but some of this looks a little, it just looks a little over, over that amount when we look at twenty, thirty-three, so economic development, marketing, budgeting, all that kind of stuff. So once again, we're moving positions around, reclassifying, all that good stuff, so it's, but it's still technically the same headcount, but it's still, you know, it's a two hundred thousand dollar swing. I get part of it is, once again, I mean, what do we have here? Thirty thousand of that, two hundred thousand is operations and maintenance, but you've still got another hundred thousand dollars in wages, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in wages going up, but it's the same headcount. So if looking at page thirty-three and thirty-four, we look at salaries, wages and regular, went from this time last year, two hundred and seventy-three thousand proposed, yeah, it did go up to three sixty-six, but what, so what happened between our proposed and what we're now proposing? Like that's a, it's a hundred thousand dollar increase just for wages for people.
So, so it looks like in twenty, so in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we had the Economic Development Manager, the Marketing Manager, the Coordinator, and the Specialist. We, we got rid of the Coordinator in twenty-three, twenty-four and replaced it with a Specialist too, so.
That's a hundred thousand dollar increase?
No.
Do you want me to try and answer that, Heather? So I think what you're looking at is actual, the first column, actual twenty-two, twenty-three, right? So that shows not the budget, but what we actually ended up spending. So we probably had some salary savings there. And then the amended budget is, is our current budget in the, in the middle. And then our proposed budget is actually less than our current year budget.
It's less than the amended?
Correct.
But from this time last year, actual, like, so I'm asking, what, what has changed between where we were a year ago, actual budget, and where we are today? What, where is the hundred thousand dollars gone?
So the actual, it was, so we may have had salary savings. Most likely, it's salary savings in actual twenty-two, twenty-three because we didn't hire one of our marketing specialists or the coordinator as we were transitioning those two positions. So we kept it vacant while we were hiring. So there was actually probably a salary savings there. So your actual is less than what was budgeted in that year.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'd have to go back and actually look at what the previous year budget was.
Budget was and compared.
Before that?
Yes.
All right.
Twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-third, twenty- 20, 21, 23, uh, 20, 122.
And IT, I, I get it. I, I can see it in here as well. A lot of it is just, it's the cost of software, it's the cost, I mean, the biggest part of it is, biggest increases is in the operations and maintenance. It's not necessarily the salaries, that's been very consistent. And thank you to Jerry for keeping that consistent. Animal control, it's, once again, is what it is. City clerk, on the other hand, oh my goodness. Now, city clerk, once again, it's, it's the election. I mean, God willing, we won't have to have, I guess we do have to have one. We've got, there's an initiative, so, yeah. So there's going to be something there. Hopefully, there's a few council members and a mayor that don't have to worry about it, but, but yeah, that's the biggest cost there is preparing for the election, so we're, I'm cognizant of that. HR, this one, it's, yeah, this is, these are big swings here. And I get, once again, risk management. So we have HR and then risk management. I mean, risk management, that's a, that's a hell of a jump. And I know a lot of it is, what was it, insurance or something like that? Is that what it was? Uh, let's see, HR, all right, this is just HR. HR, we've got a 200,000 swing in personnel. I'm just guessing it's gonna be something, it's a little over 200, but something similar to cost savings by not having somebody for a while, and not having people in place that we...
Yeah, that one I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, they had, they, in 22, 23, they didn't, they were not fully staffed. And then, they were, I think Rita came on in the end of the year, 20, like in, in March 23, a year ago. Yeah. And then, so the big swing is, is Rita coming on and Michelle coming on. We had our two, we had the, the admin secretary and the HR technician, but we did not have the director or the, the senior management analyst. So that's, that's the big swing. And then the, the swing from 23, 24 to the current year are, is the 4%, and it's also, oh...
That's more than 4%.
Sorry. It's the 4%, and it's also the step increases, budgeted step increases and things like that.
All right. And then finance, 73, you know, once again, I, we can look at any number there, going just personnel-wise, and is that the same thing? Is that, I mean, there's a few more employees in finance, I get that.
So some of the, the big, the big swings are, again, step increases. We had, we had for such a long time in finance, we had, everybody was at the, at top step. So when, when Tim left and, and people kinda moved around, we kinda all started at a lower step. So you're seeing, you're seeing step increases, so swings that way, 4%. We are, we have been fully staffed the whole time for the most part, so that's not, it's not a staffing issue. Also, if you're looking at, are you just looking at salaries, or are you looking at personnel?
I'm looking at salaries, is, that's a something, that's something we can control for the most part.
Yes.
We can't control what, you know, some, some of these other things are just, they're just the costs of being in, in business, of being, being a city. But, you know, it all starts with the salaries.
Right.
As the most controllable item that we have.
I think in, in the finance department, there are two people currently that are at top step. So everybody, everybody else is budgeted to get, to get an increase.
Okay. And over and above the 4%.
Over, yes.
All right.
Can I ask one question real quick, or here, it's on the bank fees?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I know we talked about this recently, and, you know, our cost, why they, they increased so much, but have we looked into more, like, how we can change the bank, like, into other programs, or?
So ultimately, yeah, so ultimately, what we plan to do is incorporate those into our, into our fee when we do the user fee study. I have received other vendors that we could possibly use right now, we just haven't had an opportunity to go and go and look at them. But yeah, they're still, they're, they're, it's, we're budgeting close to 100,000.
Are we still paying 5, 6, 7, 8% fees?
We are.
Which is crazy to me, in general, but you'll get there, I guess.
All right. And we got a, engineering, we have a $200,000 swing. We're adding a half an employee, but that's a, and it's a $200,000 swing in just, in just salaries alone. Yet, yet we got currently 13 and a quarter. You're trying to add, we're trying to add a half a person there. What is the, what's the job for that half a person that's not getting accomplished currently?
So that's the development services technician that would be up at the front counter and building for the customer service. I don't know, Carl, if you wanna chime in on that?
Yeah, currently, we only have one technician position to cover all planning, bill, our planning and engineering. It's been that way for a while. The building department now is covered. We traditionally had had three, you know, during tough times, one of those was removed. And what we're finding, and what I've been observing, is our billability rates for senior engineers is going down, primarily because we're doing technician duties. And why that's important is, senior engineering staff, we actually bill to project accounting. CIP engineers bill towards grant funds, bill towards project accounts, SB1, Transnet. Our staff time goes against those, technicians do not. And our engineers are doing technician work, so it's not really efficient and effective to have a very high-paid employee doing low-paid functions. And that'll free them up to work on some of those things that we're backlogged on, in addition to all the OT and time that we're doing, be a reduction in overtime. I have engineers that are working every Friday off. Some of them don't even have time to take vacation. There's four of us that are maxed out on vacation, being forced to take vacation right now, because we just don't have the time to keep up the workload.
So it's also a cost recovery, then, is what you're...
It is cost recovery, and that's how I promoted it to the manager's office, to justify those positions, or the request for that position. And also to prevent some of council's goals was customer service at the front counter with the building department, and so we can have coverage up there. We got, we got three people covering the counter primarily. They all have totally different disciplines. It's hard to find a single technician at a technician level that knows building, planning and engineering. This will help with those services, and then let them, the technician, also help the engineer do the lesser functions, so the engineers can work on the higher priority, more available functions.
And this is gonna be a city employee, not a, not a contract?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Broken record, but it's the same stuff, like these, these salary increases you got, and we're increasing one and a half employees with a personnel cost increase of $490,000. That's, I mean, that, I guess that is from our, once again, I was going by what we planned for this time last year to where we are today. That's a, that's a, it's a big swing. I get you're, it's amended, that we amended it down the road, but there was, there was reasoning for this 22, 23 budgeting, like this, there was, there was backing behind it, there was information behind it, and we're, this is a really big jump.
So I think those are, once again, unfilled budgeted positions. So because we're showing actuals in that column and not budget, where the other two columns were showing budget, you'll see those, those big swings. So we had, I mean, we had, if you were to look at the budget for 22, 23, it would be, it would be higher, because we had vacancies in the department.
That we no longer currently have?
Well, these, these other two columns are, are budgeted, so they're based on budgeted positions, not necessarily if there's somebody in those positions.
All right.
Can I talk about the new position?
You can.
Okay. So I just wanna be clear that the new position that's being proposed is for cannabis and for environmental. And so the environmental is very similar to the engineering tech positions, in that they're cost recovery. So if somebody comes in with a discretionary project and they're asking for an environmental review, we're able to use that person to review those environmental documents, and we cover that cost back. For cannabis, while there is an initial application period, and we will receive application fees, we will also receive fees for the renewals. There's coordination that needs to be done with the sheriff's department, with the state department of cannabis control. Anytime there's a change to their site plan or their business operation, we need to also process that. And so it would not be one, two people, it'd be one person who'd be doing that, along with supporting the implementation of the sustainability Santee plan, which is something that unfortunately we haven't been able to staff or update since it was adopted initially. That's also a requirement of state law.
I get it. And the cannabis part, I, once again, that's, I, I understand the upfront part, I understand that there's, and there is an offset in the application fee to, to take care of that. And though, these are the things that Mayor Mentos, you know, you said many times, I don't ever wanna put somebody in a position that's funded by one-time funds or one-time fees that we have to take away down the road. That's kinda what this is. The application fee doesn't come back to us again. It's, the annual fee will be there, but it's, if you looked at the, at the amounts, I think it was 250 the first year, and then 100, and then 100, what's that? 111 going forward. That's a, that's a big offset. And it, we're talking about a maximum of four, a maximum of four licenses being issued. This is far from a full-time position. The other stuff, you know, I don't know exactly how much time really needs to go into that other stuff, but this, I, I just didn't wanna have anybody saying, oh, this is being totally offset by, by the cannabis fees. It's, it's not. It's not. And so I'm not, I'm not, still not sure about, about that one. I crossed that out. I think I figured that one out on my own. Nothing on code compliance. Public services, I mean, that's just a, that's a big, that's a big jump looking at it just right out the gate. Just, when you look at the big number altogether, public service, you're, you know, from the amended budget to even the proposed, it's, that's $400,000 in public services.
Councilmember, if I may, we've had a few retirements recently, and we had about three retirements, and that's a lot of cost savings on there, so that's probably the increase, and also the added staff members, two additional staff members this past fiscal year, the human services and open space coordinator, to also include the irrigation tech.
I understand the irrigation tech. What was the other one?
The human services and open space coordinator, sir?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Gotcha. And I, you know...
That one's being funded partially by ARPA funding.
The, getting into, you know, as well, the special event stuff, and the cost for that, you know, I, I appreciate the city manager trying to do more to promote the city with special events, but, you know, you're looking at the additional costs of, of Friday night lights, I, I just, and the cost to staff timing to perform those duties, I don't know that that's something that I, I wanna see going on in the future. I think we've got enough, I, we have a lot of great events in the city of Santee, we really do. I think we concentrate on keeping them great and fresh and moving forward, and without trying to get the staff to continue to do more while they're not able to do other things, because they're working on these, these new events coming up. And then they're gonna be saying, well, crap, we just don't have enough time, we need more people. These are not, unlike the concerts in the park are not, they're not offset fully by sponsors. These are, these are things that it's actually costing the city. So that's something I, in the future, wanna make sure we're not maybe throwing money at. If you guys have a different opinion, that's fine, but it's a, I'm just looking at all these little tiny things here that they add up. 70,000 here, 100,000 there, 200,000 there, you know, blink of an eye, you're at a million, 2 million. And it really is, and I'm like, a lot of this, a lot of these big increases, I get it, are insurance costs, liability costs, there's just no way, there is no way around that. It's, getting insurance for anything in California right now is exceptionally difficult. So I understand that. And then, as Vice Mayor Trotter had stated earlier, you know, we're gonna have law enforcement contracts coming up in the near future, and we're gonna have a new MOU from fires, like, these are the things that we have to be really minding the Ps and Qs on. So previous years, I was very bullish on what, what's gonna happen in our economy, and it's gonna continue, and right now, I'm just, I'm saying it, man, I, I just, I'm not feeling so great of what, on the sales tax part. I'm not feeling as confident as you are. But I'm more confident on the property tax part, so I think that it's, I think it's gonna wash. So I'm not worried about that, I, I think it's gonna wash.
You remember when we used to do bake sales?
Yeah. Well, now we could add other stuff to them to get the revenue up.
Did you really go there?
Yeah, love. What were you thinking?
TLC, of course.
Yeah. All right. I, I think that's real, those are the big things for me. And I'll let you guys talk, and I will reserve comment for other stuff.
Ron just said I have three minutes. Good luck, buddy. It's funny, because I did write lipstick sales right here. It was two of the things that was reported, so I'm agreeing with you, Councilmember McNellis, about, so, yeah, with a few things you said, actually, tonight, and you too. But also the jobs report that came out recently was misleading, because there was a lot of government jobs in that jobs report. So those are indicators that council members look at.
Okay, so the way BLS jobs report works is, it's done by modeling, Bureau Labor Statistics, it's done by modeling. So they look at how many businesses, corporate companies were created, and how many died. And they say, well, based on so many being created, that should equate to X amount of jobs. If you look at the ADP report, there was 10,000 jobs lost. ADP actually does payroll for a living, that's what they do for almost every major corporation in the country. Ten, they're showing a $10,000, a 10,000 job loss, BLS showed a 600,000 gain.
Yeah, I know.
Come on.
I know.
Come on. Someone's manipulating the numbers just a little bit.
I did have, if, whoever's controlling the slides can bring up the personnel slide that had the engineering and planning positions, because I just wanna, I think it's one prior to, prior to that, this one. Okay. So I've had a couple of budget meetings, actually, Heather and Aaron today, as well as Marlene, and then, what is today, Wednesday? Yeah, so Tuesday I had a meeting as well. So most of my questions were answered. But I did write, you know, based on the conversations we had today about at least a couple of these positions, that, you know, the, at, at least the way it was presented to me, was that these positions would have full cost recovery through billing and not impact the general fund. But I, I'm not entirely sure that's true. I am looking at the associate planner position here, and to your point, it's, it's four licenses, and then that part's done. I don't think, you know, it's, yes, it's going to be a lot of work upfront, but then it should get into a routine. And then our environmental applications, I dug in a little bit more on that particular part of the job. And it's, the position, I guess, that's already doing this for the city of Santee, is paid for through developer fees, but only for big developers. I think there's only like five big developments that pay the salary. So, and I, and I, you know, the conversation will, you know, if a gas station needs environmental review, blah, 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 like, that's just something that staff could handle normally. So I, I don't know how that associate planner position maths out over time. And then another thought that I had was, somebody to work the, the counter, which I get, like, you know, I didn't know, like Carl just explained tonight, that they're not able to do their billable hours because they're spending time at the counter. I didn't know that until just now. But there are other alternatives for someone working the counter, and, you know, there's a lot of agencies have engineering interns, so people that are in, getting a... a lot of agencies have engineering interns, so people that are in, getting a degree in engineering, and they work front counter positions to learn the business and also handle those kinds of responsibilities. So it's just an option that we might have. A lot of my comments actually on the budget are, you know, this is good, this is good, this is good. But there is one thing that gives me a little bit of consternation, so I wrote down some thoughts, and hopefully I can just pull those out right now. Hold on a second. Some papers, here they are. Budget time. Oh, here it, here they are. Sorry about that.
Three minutes.
I know, really? Three minutes to find the paper. Okay. So some of the comments that I shared with staff, and maybe it would help us all, because we have to go through each one of these tabs, and, you know, how many people, how many positions are in this department and this department? We don't have like one spreadsheet to look at the organization as a whole. So, and I also noticed in the, in the big budget, I, I think it's like page I, like the very first page, the org chart, it's, it's missing, well, it doesn't say one, but it's missing the assistant manager position, economic development and marketing department, the IS department's not on here. So I, you know, there's probably other departments that are not even represented on this organizational chart, and I want to make sure that all departments are represented, so we can understand what bodies work here. And then it should be what we have now, and then the proposed one, so we can easily see a snapshot of how positions are moving year over year.
Councilwoman Koval, if you go to, to page V, would that, would that be what you're looking for?
Where is that?
It's right in the beginning.
Well, I have.
It's behind the first blue tab that says introduction, so it's like, what, one?
Mine's blank. I don't have anything. Oh, no.
General Fund tab?
Right before the General Fund tab. It should be a summary of funded positions.
Was that fund or fun?
Funded.
Not fun?
No.
No? There'd be no General Fund here?
No.
I, I, I see that, but that, that doesn't, I, I guess I have more comments, because this is incomplete information on this page as well, but, yeah, it's that one. So this page doesn't have, does not have all the positions. And then this page, summary of funded positions, should have full-time equivalents. What it has is just full-time staff members, right? Or no? Does it have FTEs?
It has full-time equivalents.
Okay. So where would I find, so every single position is here?
All full-time positions are here, listed, yes.
And every single part-time position?
Part-times are not included in here, in the summary of funded positions, no.
Okay. I, I think we should have a summary of part-time positions included, and it could be listed as FTEs, but I, you know, off the top of my head, I would think Community Services has a lot of part-time positions, and that is salary, and we don't have a representation of that in really anywhere. It's, it's probably in the salaries, but it's not in the.
Yeah, it's in the part-time salaries, yes.
Yeah. So for, for us, for, well, for me, I'll speak for me, it would be easier, instead of going through each tab, is to have all this information upfront. So that was my first thing. And let's make sure that we are capturing all the departments. Me personally, I'd like to see the four-year FTE numbers by, you know, maybe in this format with the part-time people included, so we can look at trends over time, because just what, the experience you just went through, trying to remember two years ago, this is, just makes it easier for us to interpret the budget over time. And then the last column would be, you know, what we're looking at for, you know, what we're looking to approve in June. And then, I don't know if this is a, how I'm used to reading org charts is when you have like the city manager, and you have administration as a column, so this is page 21 as an example. What this org chart does is just lists the duties, which I think is very helpful, but it doesn't list the people, the positions that do the duties. And I'd like to see that translated into, you know, you could even put, no, by position, by position, just to make it easier to understand.
Councilman, I think you want the, it sounds like you'd like that on, on each one of the org charts per department, correct?
Yeah. I, I think so. So that, that would make it easier to, for us to comprehend the budget. Yeah. Because right now, I don't know. And then I'm going to, I actually wrote some words down about information systems, because two of you have already touched on that, but this is the thing that, like I said, gives me consternation. So here's what I wrote. Our information systems department is exceptionally small, but has accomplished a great deal with limited resources. However, I believe we've reached a critical point where underfunding this department is no longer sustainable. So tonight, I urge the council to consider either funding the GIS position to full-time in order to, in addition to the other staffing requests in the budget, but maybe not, or pause on associate planner or development tech positions and explore other options, like an engineering intern program to fill that gap. To stay relevant, our city must continue to evolve and embrace modern technology. A small IS department cannot effectively scale its operations, which will hinder the implementation of new technologies and services, slowing down progress, service levels, and innovation. GIS technology and reporting are crucial to our city's evolution, with multiple departments reliant on them. And I'm noting that the Eden software is no longer supported, and it is essential to our core business. We must have IS support for this implementation as well. If I asked Jerry to list all the software platforms we use throughout the city, I imagine it would be extensive. And I listed a few that I know off the top of my head, but even seeing under Economic Development and Marketing, Santee is, TV is listed under there, but it's also information technology. Without the IS department making sure Santee TV works, it doesn't work. So those are the kinds of things I think we're missing in this analysis.
Website?
A website? You can, there's just every single department. So to, I wrote down here, I, I focused on the part-time GIS position that we have, so we do have a part-time GIS position that's not listed in the FTEs. And I think we should make that a full-time position. If you're familiar with GIS or ESRI, it's, it's what a, a lot of cities or public agencies use to manage assets, and every city has a lot of assets, from street signs, lights, trees, manhole covers, all of our facilities and everything within a facility, park assets, the list goes on and on. And not having a full-time position there, to me, if, if Jerry or, I'm sorry, I forget the other person on his team, if, if, you know, they're setting up a computer, dealing with an IT emergency or IS emergency, you know, and then writing reports for GIS and other things, it, it's so crucial for a city to be funded in a, in a, in technology that I, I can't imagine how they do it, honestly. So the final thought here is, to provide proactive versus reactive service in the tech world, we need people. A small IS department can't adequately support and maintain our IT infrastructure, leading to delays, increased downtime, and potential disruptions in critical services. AI and quantum computing are the latest big tech changes. It has been widely reported that quantum computing will be bigger, be a bigger tech change than AI. Again, people are needed to manage these transformative tech changes. Finally, and, you know, this is kind of timely, cybersecurity threats are constantly evolving, and a small IS department leaves our systems vulnerable to attacks, data breaches, and other security incidences. Relying heavily on a few individuals is risky if those key employees leave or become unavailable. An IS department in a public agency is critical in a public emergency. This means that they are also on call 24/7. Whether the EOC is activated or not, IS employees must monitor our systems and be ready at a moment's notice. So I urge the council to recognize the critical need for proper funding and support for our IS department to ensure the continued growth and security, sorry, I'm losing my voice, of our city's technological infrastructure. And I did ask Heather to share, excuse me, the cost difference, to make the GIS position from part-time to full-time, so if you could share what that would be.
Sure. So a fully loaded, full-time position or GIS IT analyst is $136,000. We currently have $34,000 budgeted in the, for part-time, so the, the difference would be about $101,000.
Have we considered going outside a part of this and having an outside company?
I, I thought about that, and, you know, in prior businesses have used that kind of model, but it, it's still, it's such a small department, it's woefully small, that, yeah, well, I, I, I think we don't have proper succession planning in place, and we're going to have, not only, I, I feel like we're chasing technology versus staying proactive in it, and I, I just think this is a critical need to have in-house. If you look at all the other departments, this to me is.
Yeah, I don't mind in-house, but it's kind of like what we have with the, the building is, you, you have the opportunity maybe of going outside too, and maybe working on a contract with it.
It could be, it could be looked at. Like I said, I've, I've tried that model before. I don't know, I think if we had maybe a cup, one more person, then you could, the, the need, even with a half, you know, moving a part-time person to full-time, to me, is, that's still under.
Well, after what happened, I, I'm, yeah, I agree.
And then, you know, looking at the budget overall, we have, like Heather mentioned, $86,000 savings by moving, you know, after a retirement and, and moving some positions around, but also some other positions that we should give a, I don't know, it just comes down to.
Priorities?
Yes, priorities, thank you. And also, I understand that there's not a cost recovery in, in IS or IT.
Sure there is.
Okay. It's, it's.
You have, you have a cyber breach.
But you're not going to have someone come in and give you a check. Like, it's a different way to look at it. So I'm really just strongly going to advocate that we reevaluate that portion of the budget.
Strong.
After I lost my voice. Yeah.
Really great debate, discussion, questions. When I, you know, I've been doing this a long time now, looked a lot of these budgets, and I think you mentioned that yourself. And the one thing that I have learned over time is that a budget is a budget is a budget. And what that means is that if I have positions, whether they're filled or not, I still have to budget for them. So I have to put those numbers in there. And that's why we see such a large, I think, discrepancy between that actual and, you know, the, the proposed, is because we know that it's going to cost us more money for salaries and retirement, and, and, you know, maybe even some of the infrastructure that goes around some of our offices. So, so my concern isn't so much the proposed side of it as it is what it's going to look like when it's an actual. And so I think that when we talk about $25,000 a year during, to create these, some of these positions, I, that are, pay raises in there. To me, 25 grand is nothing, we're talking about a $60 million budget. But then again, it comes down to how often does that add up? Okay? So, but I think that we're, we, I think the economy's going to be better than some people think, just based on the fact of our history and how we approach, you know, economic development here. The fact that we have done better than many cities around us shows the fact that having this discussion like we have up here today, and the questions that we ask staff, shows that we're really thinking about the future and how we're going to be able to handle things. I think that it's important to do cost recovery by having somebody work in these front counters that can do it. I'm not opposed at all to an internship, because number one, they're cheaper, and not only that, but that is part of succession planning, maybe developing somebody into our next engineer, our next planner, our next whatever. And so I really would like to explore that, because that is a cost savings also.
And I could point out, we, we actually already have an engineering intern program. We have three interns right now. It's a much different level than a technician, for example, that you've been talking about. And we do use that for succession planning. In fact, two of our employees were former interns currently, so it does work, and, and I fully support that. And we do have three engineering interns, they're very inexpensive. The problem is, once they graduate, if we don't have a position, they move on.
Gotcha.
They're great for one time, but not continuous support.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear, though. But I, I really support you on your IT suggestion. That kind of goes back to what I was, I started off with. And the thing is that not only is it the GIS that is going to be enhanced by a full-time employee, but that full-time employee also is going to be able to augment some of the work that's being done by Jerry and, I can't remember the other person's name, John, yeah.
Sorry, John.
I want to say Matt every time.
I know.
And so that will augment some of the work that they probably do also. So I, I like that idea. I think that we can find it and put everything in this operating budget that we've talked about tonight. But we're going to get a mid-budget update, I believe, after we, if we approve this, whenever we do improvement, because we tend to do a midterm budget. And if we have a declining or rate of return, for lack of better, you know, you know, idea, we can make adjustments then. And I think they're pretty easy to make adjustments. We're going to see people that are probably going to be aging out and retiring also, that may create some cost savings, although not nearly to the amount that we had the last couple of years. So, so personally, I think this is a very well-prepared budget. And I remember some of the early days, and you're, you're looking through it going, what the heck am I looking at? And this is very comprehensive. Yeah, there, there's some little things that maybe we could tweak here and there, but overall, and one of the things that I really liked, and if any of you ever have a chance, take a look, the budget's on the back counter there, and it's only 331 pages. But each one of these starts off with what the council objectives are and the accomplishments. And when you read the accomplishments that have occurred over the last couple of years, you know what? You, you see that the money that we're spending is absolutely for the right reasons. We're not throwing our money away, although, you know, you can make mistakes here and there. Sometimes you make an investment, it doesn't work out right, you correct it. Own up to your mistakes, you own it, you change it. But I think it's a well-written document, personally, and I want to thank you for that and your team. And, and I know that you wrote this 331 pages all, last night, didn't you? Yeah. Because, you know, I get those comments, people go, you know, you, you, how, how did, how come this is the first time we're hearing about it? You know, were they just work on it the last week? And people don't understand that this is actually, you know, from one budget to the next is a continuous effort. So, but when this one gets approved, I, I know that you're immediately going to be starting on the next one. So it could be another year of preparing for the midterm budget review. And so, so it's a lot of work, you know, and we have a lot of staff in the, you know, in the audience. the audience. Kind of interesting, staff is on this side, and people from the community are on this side, and a couple staff. And you know what? The staff does a great job. Everybody puts their hand in the bucket of water before it disappears and comes out. But you know what? I just want to commend everybody for all the hard work you've done, because, you know, we all want the biggest piece of the pie that we can get for our departments, and sometimes you don't get the biggest piece of the pie. But you know what? Appreciate you eating what you get and being thankful for it. That's all I can say. So since this is a workshop, we don't have to vote on anything, donate any motions or anything. Unless there's any last-minute comments from the council, we're going to go on. All right, let's move on. Thank you very much. Thanks, Heather. Let me find my place again here. Okay, that goes to item number 15 now. This is a resolution awarding the design-build-construction contract for the temporary fire station living quarters, Project Horizons Construction Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15301, 15303, and 15304. Who's going to start this off? Is it you, Justin?
Liz Carl really wants to do it. It's going to be fire. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This is for the awarding of the design-build contract for the temporary fire station at the Ops Yard. As a reminder, the temporary fire station is going to be co-located at the eventual site of the permanent fire station. It's not actually going to be in this exact location, we had to shift a little bit, but for all intents and purposes, it's going to be in this general area. The temporary fire station is going to be a manufactured home, similar to what you see in this building. It'll be skirted up, it'll look a little bit nicer. And then the apparatus bay is going to be something similar to what you see in this picture down on the lower left-hand corner, which is either going to be a steel structure or a sprung structure. I want to go over a little bit of the timeline of events just to jog everyone's memories because it was quite a while ago where the funding for this project was authorized. So on October 11, 2023, City Council appropriated about $1 million for this project. We then started to craft an RFP. We issued the RFP on December 29, and on January 25, we got one proposal back. And the proposal was in excess of $2.2 million for the living quarters and the actual apparatus bay. Well, we only had $1 million appropriated, and we also, the staff that was working on this, just felt that this could be done for a much more economical price. So we rejected the bid, and I got to credit my management analyst, Venus McFadden, who happens to be here right now, because we went with a Plan B, and she found through this Sourcewell procurement process that there are actually opportunities for design-build projects like this. Now, we've done this before for doing things such as, you know, buying turnouts, monitors, vehicles, but we had never done it for something like this. And so she brought this to our attention, and because it was new, it just took a lot of time to vet through legal, finance, HR, my department. And eventually, we received a proposal for the living quarters alone for $612,000. Now, mind you, the other bid that we had was close to $1.2 million just for this portion of the project. So I greatly apologize, there's nobody that's wanted this to move faster than me. Maybe one firefighter that had a bet that I would be able to deliver on time, and he's going to lose. But this has pained us, it's taken this long. And so I just wanted to spend a little bit of time explaining why it took longer than we anticipated. But the overall net positive is that we are going to save, compared to the RFP received, a significant amount of money. So we immediately pivoted towards asking the same company to now start working on the apparatus bay. It's going to be somewhat staggered as far as the building of the actual living quarters and the apparatus bay, but at least they're moving forward. So I mentioned a little about the Sourcewell contract. It's a government cooperative agreement that allows us to link up government agencies with some suppliers, fully vetted with legislative authority. And the construction project, also known as the EZIQC, allows us for doing essentially an RFP process and just talking to one eventual builder. So it saves us a bunch of time, it saves us a lot of logistical challenges, and I think that there's going to be interest in this city moving forward with seeing what other opportunities there are for this, going through this process. And again, thank you, Venus, for bringing this to our attention. And the recommendation at this point is to award the design-build-construction contract to implement the temporary fire station living quarters to Horizons Construction Company International in the amount of $612,283, authorizing the fire chief to approve change orders that equates to 15% of the project, not to exceed $91,843, fining the project exempt from the provisions of CEQA, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, there are no speaker slips. Carl, did you have anything?
Okay. I think the chief covered it very well.
All right. Questions or comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. I just, you know, I found out about Sourcewell just recently, too, from Jeff over at Heartland Communications. They use that, and I thought the same thought, we should be utilizing this service, so it's great.
And we do use it for some of the other, like I said, it's the smaller kind of goods and just procuring items. So doing it for this type of service is unique to us, though.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. Okay, that takes us to item number 16, which is resolution authorizing award of the contract for landscape and horticultural management --
A motion to approve.
Let me at least read the title. I think we need to do that by rules. Let's see, landscape and horticultural management services for Area 2 medians and rights of way to Stephen Smith Landscape LLC per RFP and Community Services. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric is going to be making this presentation.
Thank you. Was there a second on that? I guess you're up.
Okay, second.
Okay. A motion, a second. Do we have any other comments or questions? Well, let's vote then.
Motion carries unanimously.
I know Sam wishes it was always that easy. Good job, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, that takes us to item number 17, which is a resolution award of the contract for landscape and horticultural management services for Area 3. The same, same, same.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Sam was going to wait for him to start talking.
Great job. Thank you.
I did warn you, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Great job, Eric.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, that takes us to the next round of non-agenda public comment. Any speakers?
We have no speakers, sir.
No speakers, all right. Well, then that takes us to council, city council reports. Let's go ahead and start down here on the left again.
None.
Was that a no?
That's a yes.
It's a yes.
Sorry. Apologize. Sorry, that's my --
Do you want me to go pass?
Yeah, go pass, I'll come back.
Anything, Vice Mayor?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Is that enough time?
Yep.
All right.
All right, well, I do agree, you know, with Friday Night Lights, maybe that is a little bit overkill. And I know it's taxing, as a recreation staff member, I know how, you know, a lot of events can be taxing, but we did have Friday Night Lights, that was really kind of unique, and so I'll just read what Lauren Bachman, the program director for Miss Santee, posted on Facebook. It is my pleasure to introduce the 2024 Miss Santee title holders. So Miss Santee princesses are Ella Gieber, Reagan Guess, and Riley Levin. The Miss Teen Santee is Sydney Guess, and Miss Santee is Serenity Stark. So I wanted to congratulate all the ladies. They had that ceremony at Friday Night Lights last Friday. The mayor, obviously, was the emcee. I was, Lauren, you know, reached out to me and asked if I would be involved in the judging, and it was, I've never done anything like that before. You know, it's not what you think it is, right? They do essays about the city, they give a one-minute elevator pitch about themselves, and that you look at their GPAs and their community involvement and all those kinds of things. These ladies are remarkable young ladies and really great program. And the feedback I heard is they appreciated having that event at a separate event versus at the concert, because it gave the families more time. You know, there was a nice audience there, but a lot of family members there supporting, you know, the people participating in the program. And everybody got to give their speech again and, you know, say goodbye to the outgoing courts and -- and I also want to give a shout out to Scott Legace, because if you are familiar with Scott, he goes around the community and takes a lot of pictures of community events. He does an amazing job, and he was there that night as well. And they recognized him as well because, you know, they've got lifetime memories just because he volunteers his time and comes out to these events. So that was that. And the only, the only other thing I want to mention is that I do have a town hall coming up. It's June 18, which is a Tuesday here, from 6 to 7. I promise to keep it under an hour, and you don't have to live in District 3 to attend. Anybody in the city is welcome to come, but it will also be on Santee TV if you can't make it. Thank you.
All right. You know, I was at that, like you said, and, you know, it was really special. And, you know, Rob, I think you and I probably go back the furthest with a lot of these contests, and it used to be very different. And it was, when they actually did the crowning and things, it was a lot more intimate because it was in a theater and there was a lot more people there.
Just for that.
Yeah, it was just for that. And I mentioned that is, when I first started this, a lot of those young girls, they felt like daughters. And of course, I got older and they felt like they were granddaughters. And I'm really not looking forward to the next step because that just means they all stay this pretty much the same age, and I'm the guy that gets older. But it doesn't change your perspective of how you feel about them, especially after a year's involvement. They become very close, and, you know, Samantha, for instance, you know, she's a little older as a teen, or I mean, a Miss Santee, and because she's 27 years old. So you actually, you know, she's not in school, she has a business, she works another job. So you really develop these great friendships along the way. And so it's always hard to let them go, but you always look forward to the fact that you got some new people that are coming in, some girls that you will see that turn into young women and ladies. And that's really the fun part about it also, because of their experiences that we provide for them throughout our city and a lot of our events. So that was a great opportunity. I'm glad you started off with that because I was definitely going to say something. And the only other thing I have is that this week Sandag is doing something a little bit different. They are actually going to hold a tribal summit up at Paula, and that's going to be in collaboration with the Southern California Tribal Chairman's Association. And they'll be talking about a lot of things that happen between the tribal nations and the municipalities in the county. A lot of people don't understand what that is. We'll start off learning about what the sovereignty means to tribal nations, public law, and things of that nature, that both federally and in California and things of that. Of course, everybody in planning and engineering knows that before you do a project, you have to have an expert from a tribal nation come out and make sure that there's nothing there that could be disturbed from, you know, their history. And so it's going to be a great opportunity for a lot of newer council members to go through that and learn about those things. So I'm looking forward to that, getting up early on Friday morning and making that. So that's all I have to report out. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of brief things tonight for our community. As was mentioned earlier, we have a really great series of summer concerts in our parks, Town Center Community Park, and the first one is tomorrow night, starts at 6:30. Cassie B. is the performer. Community Services works their tail off to make this work, and everybody has a great time. Bring out your family, bring out your picnic, bring out your small lawn chairs, and enjoy a lovely night. It's really a lot of fun, and it's free, which is really great. This Friday on June 14, our recreation programs, all the classes and programs are going to be out at the Delmar Fair. So if anybody wants to know what's going on with Santee folk, that's our day to go out to the fair and perform. So come support all of our local children as they perform. There is a Renaissance Fair going on in our community, I understand. That's going to be this Saturday, so just in case you see a lot of traffic that is actually on Magnolia Avenue, be prepared. They're hoping for a big crowd over by the Historic Barn. And I just wanted to close very briefly with the fact that the city team has been really trying to bump up the amount of funding that comes into our community from grants. And while there's no guarantee, for the first time ever, the city has three federal elected officials who are supporting our asks to go to the appropriations committees to try to get some money to come to our community. It's the first time ever, ever, that I'm aware of. Congressman Isa has supported the city in the past with a request for Highway 52 at $2.5 million, the appropriations committees gave that. He is now asking for $10 million to go to Highway 52. We'll see what we get, but the ask is a great thing. That ask is mirrored by Senator Butler with the same ask on the Senate side of the Congressional House, so perhaps that will give us a better chance to get some additional money. So Highway 52 Coalition, the wheels of government move very slowly, but hopefully we're going to have a road to put them on. So that's a positive for us. In addition to which, Senator Padilla is also supporting the flock cameras for Congressman Hall. We did put in a request for that. So, pardon me, I gave you a really big promotion there, sorry, Councilman Hall. I apologize, or maybe, I don't, yeah, I apologize, actually. So for Councilmember Hall, sorry. He's supporting our request for flock cameras to come to our community. Don't know again if it'll be supported on the federal level, but it's great that we have some support from him. In addition to which, he is also supporting our dewatering station that is to go down to the Ops Yard. That's a clean water project, and he's supporting that. Again, maybe an opportunity for us to get some money, first time ever. And the last thing that he has put in for is money for a community center. So if we can get that, that moves that project forward even more quickly, and we don't have to wait to depend on impact fees. So if any of those happen, it is anticipated the appropriations committees will be meeting within the next two to three weeks. We'll hear probably a month or so after that. Usually it's midsummer to the end of summer. Federal fiscal year begins October 1, so we hope to hear an answer before the 1st of October, which will be a quarter of our fiscal year through, but it gives us an opportunity to look at where some additional money might come from for some of our projects. So just wanted to give the community and the council an update. Hopefully, we'll get one or two of those asks actually funded. That's it, sir.
City attorney?
No report, Mayor.
No report? Oh my gosh. Well, in that case, then, I think we'll just jump over to a closed session. How's that sound? This is a public employee performance evaluation, and it's for the city attorney who didn't have a report tonight. And it's for the city attorney who didn't have her report tonight.
Are we, are we on? Okay. Let's record show that we're back in open session. The employee evaluation was completed and no action taken. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.